At 7:30 PM. Again, thank you for joining us on Zoom and thank you for the patience in this new mode for us because we wanted to introduce back in as best we can public comment. We value our public. We usually have packed meetings. We've been seeing and hearing directly. We still have our public comment email box open, so please know that is always available to you. But we, we hope our technology works with us to get it right. A big congrats to all of our fifth grade graduates and stepping up at all of the elementary schools. A big thank you to the parents and the PTOs who helped get us together and had a great celebration for the kids. I will say and the teachers and staff who came and socially distanced, but still had all the energy and excitement to make that day special for our kids. It's much appreciated. Tomorrow, hopefully eighth grade will go off with the same without a hitch. And again, we thank our PTO and our administration and our teachers for all they've done with that. We'll apologize to neighbors and vans for any traffic, but we appreciate everyone's patience so we can give these kids a great send off. And certainly we are really, really looking for, forward to our seniors graduation and an appropriate, great celebration for them later in July. I will tell you, I am missing that ceremony. It is one of my favorite days of the year to see the excitement and celebrate all those kids have done. So we are looking forward to something special in July and seniors, we are with you. Tonight we will honor our teachers and our retirees for all the service they have given Darien Public Schools and most importantly to our students and our children. So we look forward to that. And Dr. Adley, thank you for, for getting that together. And again, in this virtual world, in this virtual world, we wanted to make sure we said thank you to all the years of service of our teachers. And we have the honor tonight of getting to celebrate the recipients of the superintendent's award. So it is a packed night and then we go into a full schedule of budget and reopening ideas. So stay with us, but I think this is what Darien does best. We honor and celebrate the best and all those who have put efforts to our community. So it's an exciting night. With that, we will move on to public comment. And I believe Dr. McGeadigan is really managing this for us. So Dr., I'm just going to ask everyone who wants to make public comments, please remember the same rules apply as when we're in an open meeting, that there are three minutes available. And thank you for having it up on the screen. I love it when we're organized. I'll give everyone a minute to read that and then-
Tara, I'm sorry Tara, are people going to do the same? Give their name and address?
Yes, please identify both your name and your address. We need that for the public record. And with that, and if we do approach three minutes, we will give you a warning. We do need to be even and equal to all speakers. So we do that respectfully and with your understanding. So Dr. McGeadigan, if you want to allow the first public comment.
Okay, I'm looking for raised hand icons. Okay. Sorry, mine is a little bit slow. Julie Best, you are unmuted and recognized to speak.
Good evening. Thank you so much. This is Julie Best. I live at 38 Red Rose Circle. I have three children in the Darien Public Schools. I'm also a co-chair of the Council of Darien School Parents. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks so much. I just wanted to say thank you first and foremost for making live public comment a possibility. This is huge and it's very much appreciated. I just have a question for this evening regarding the budget discussion coming later. As I understand it, there are still a number of board members that do not support the overall concept of pre-buying. Pre-buying is legal and has been used by this district in the past. One recent example actually was buying iPads. And I believe that was an effort that was supported by a number of members still at the table at the Board of Education. The recommendation from the administration right now would purchase needed equipment and materials and would still allow for generous amount to be returned to the general fund balance of the town. And it could also make it possible to avoid cuts that would affect kids and programs. I haven't heard good arguments against the pre-buy. So my question is, in tonight's discussion, I'd like very much to understand if people are still in opposition to this idea, why that is? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Best. Our next speaker?
Sorry. Our next speaker is Carolina McGooey. You are unmuted and recognized to speak.
Hi. Carolina McGooey, 28 Kentet Lane. I have two girls in the public schools and I'm speaking as a parent, as a taxpayer. I would like to urge the administration to use the existing excess funds from the 1920 budget to make as many pre-bu- pre-buy as possible in order to arrive at the numbers imposed by the Board of Finance in the least impactful way to our children. These are dollars that I and the rest of our town residents were already taxed for, that were taxed for educational purposes and that are, and that should be spent on education. They should not be returned to the general funds of the town, which currently has $23 million balance and five million of those are already over the target. I also urge the board to listen to the administration, which are the experts. I hope to see tonight a collaborative effort that is transparent to all of us, that we as your electors can trust and that you are indeed open to a dialogue where actions to be cut out will be seriously and honestly considered and not that you have made up your minds in private forums. If this is not our time to choose to put politics aside and let the best interest of our children prevail, I don't know when it is. To let this opportunity pass and to arrive to the decision of having to cut school programs, cut councils, sports and technology tools or even books that do benefit our children will be a shame. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McGooey. Speaker?
Hi, Mrs. Flaherty. You are unmuted.
You are unmuted.
I'm sorry, did you say Mrs. Flaherty? Yes, I did. Hi, good evening. I'm Susie Flaherty, Six Lake Drive in Darien. I just wanted to pop in and thank you, Dr. Adley, Ellen Dunn and the other principals for the letter you sent out with sources to help us as parents and families discuss all the tragic things we're seeing happening in this country. I really appreciate you reaching out and supporting our kids. And I, I just wanted to be sure that you heard from us that many parents are extremely grateful for that letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Flaherty. Our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Sarah Parent. You are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening. I am Sarah Parent and I live at 227 Hollow Tree Ridge Road. To be clear, I'm speaking tonight as an individual, as a parent of two children in the Darien Public Schools and as a taxpayer. These views are my own. I want to publicly state my support for maximizing the pre-buying options with the unspent, unspent funds from the current school year. I strongly believe that this option makes sense and I've yet to hear a truly reasonable or logical argument against pre-buying. This option has been supported by majorities of the RTM Education Committee, the RTM Finance and Budget Committee, and the overwhelming majority of the many parents and community members that I have spoken to about this. Using the spreadsheet that was circulated by members of the Board of Education, I've determined that a cut of $1,025,000 is indeed possible without touching curriculum, programs, extracurriculars or teachers. Following the recommendation of Dr. Adley and his team, the educational experts, utilizing the pre-buy for technology, math textbooks and uniforms allows the boards the opportunity to do its work without impacting children at all. Additionally, pre-buying of the iPads and math textbooks now will save the district $55,000, $55,750 in the long run. I also feel that I have to address the meeting of the five members of the Board of Ed last week. I'm frustrated and disappointed the majority of the board met in private to discuss the budget cuts. While it may be technically legal, it doesn't make it right. Effectively, those five board members have decided what to cut from the budget without any transparency into their thought process. It's impossible to know that those members are looking out for the best interests of Darien's children when there is no record of what was discussed. I ask you to show us tonight that Darien's children and families can trust you. Please take the recommendations of the educational experts seriously and don't let party politics get in the way of doing the right thing. I hope to hear a discussion tonight where questions are asked and answered with independent thought, civility and respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent. Our next speaker?
James Newman. You are unmuted and recognized to speak.
Hi, my name's James Newman. I live at 94 Gardner Street. I want to be clear, I'm speaking as a parent of two, two children, one of whom went through the Darien Schools and one is currently at DHS. I urge the Board of Education to take advantage of the opportunity to buy items now for the next academic year. These, the dollars for these items have already been taxed and they've been taxed for education. I do not want these funds to be used to pad a over, already overfunded general fund that we have in town. I can't stress this enough. To not take advantage of this opportunity and instead choose to cut educational and athletic programs like freshman sports or clubs at the schools doesn't make any sense to me. We, as parents, we want, we want you to make the right financial decisions that allow all students to benefit in our schools. I also want to say one other thing that unrelated to this. I've been very pleased to see the content and consistency of the communication that we're seeing from the Board of Education, both from the principals and the superintendent and, and other staff. It's on point. We know what's going on, what has happened and what you're planning to do. And that that's significantly reduced the, the level of anxiety. So please continue with that. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Natalie Bolz. You are unmuted and recognized to speak.
Hi, everyone. My name's Natalie Bolz. I live at 5 Seagate Road. I'm currently a rising senior at DHS and I just wanted to address the proposed cuts of various clubs and freshman sports. I'm currently the president of the New Wave Club, which was created to serve as a helping hand to students who are new to the town of Darien. And I can attest, coming during sixth grade, that is a very difficult transition for many students. And although this club only affects a small subset of students, it still has a very important role within the DHS community. And this is the same case for many of the clubs that the Board of Education has proposed cutting. For example, the school newspaper, the literary magazine, math team and math modeling club. These clubs may have low participation, but they speak to a small subset of students with very particular interests. And by cutting these clubs, you're eliminating the opportunity for DHS students to explore various subjects that they're passionate about and find their niche within such a large and oftentimes stressful school. And I also think that freshman sports play a very critical role for DHS students. In a report that I was reading about this meeting, it said that 228 freshmen participated in freshman sports in the 2018 to 19 school year, which is two thirds of the freshman class, which I consider a very substantial number of students. And this participation in sports is an awesome way for freshmen to become part of the DHS community, to take their mind off of the stressful transition of middle school to high school and to make new friends all at the same time. My brother participated in three freshman sports and went on to become the captain and starting goalie for varsity soccer. And my younger sister is a rising freshman and plans on playing on three freshman sports teams. And I think that eliminating these teams will create what's meant, will transform what's meant to be a stress reliever into detrimental competition as freshmen are fighting for spots to play on JV and varsity. Because of these reasons, I support that the surplus fund is used for pre-buying to translate into making less cuts to DHS clubs and sports and benefit the well-being of the students at the school. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Bolz. Our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Caroline. Just Caroline, you are unmuted and recognized to speak.
Hi, it's Caroline Comfort. Good evening. My name is Caroline Comfort and I live at 48 Norotan Avenue. From the years 2000 to 2013, I taught seventh and eighth grade science at Middlesex Middle School. We currently have three children, ages seven, nine and 10, in the school system. And I'm the outgoing co-president of the Henley Elementary PTO. I'm speaking tonight in support of doing whatever it takes to preserve our teachers. And these viewpoints are my own. We moved to Darien in 2012 after having two of our children because I couldn't imagine sending them to any other school district. Maybe that sounds extreme, but with my experiences of obtaining an administrator's certification, I completed an internship in other Fairfield County districts. And through my work serving on the tri-state consortium, I was asked to help evaluate other high performing districts. In my opinion, the grass is not greener elsewhere. But even those experiences and credentials didn't completely compare, prepare me for the challenges of e-learning as a parent of three elementary school children. We all have our stories of this pandemic, the stories that will eventually become family lore and I hope the stories that I will tell my grandchildren one day. However, in each of these stories, as I think of them, they surround a person, another human who has touched our lives and most importantly, the lives of our children for the better in a way that has a lasting impact. And so I come to you this evening during these difficult times for all of us and implore you to preserve the very people who make this district what it is. The people who have touched the lives of many children, they have gone above and beyond and make, and have made things better for many. Without them, curriculum is just words on paper. E-learning has shown us the truth of that statement. It's the teachers and their passion for educating children for a better world that bring those words on paper to life and make them relevant and even fun at times. At this point, I think it goes without saying that I am not in support of cutting teaching positions from this budget. If there are options to cut things over people, I respectfully ask you to do so. I don't envy your position right now to make difficult public choices during incredibly challenging times. So I thank you deeply for critically, critically thinking about who and what makes Darien the very district it is and preserving that at its core. Thank you.
Comfort, you are approaching time.
Thank you.
You can wrap up if you have something. I just want to let you know you're approaching time.
Oh, I just was going to say thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and thank you for the challenging work ahead that you will continue to do on all of our behalf.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Sarah Lubaly. You are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Sarah Lubaly. I live at 3 Webster Valley Road. I have three children currently in the Darien Public Schools and I've also been in education for 20 years. I'm also speaking to support using the surplus to pre-buy. I'm very concerned about the proposed cuts that could affect our children. Darien students have faced many challenges already this year and it doesn't look like next year is going to be any easier. Cutting extracurriculars, the sports, the gifted program or arts could prevent children from finding their place in schools that allows them to feel safe and to feel secure. I have great confidence that Dr. Adley and his administration has presented their suggested reductions after much thought. Using the surplus money from this year on items needed for next year is the common sense solution to avoiding cuts that our children would directly feel. I urge you to use the surplus as Dr. Adley has suggested. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lubaly. Our next speaker?
Amy Zerby. You are unmuted and recognized.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Amy Zerby, Nine More House Drive. This is the most challenging budget season since 2008. The irony is that what will actually be spent next year will look nothing like the approved budget. Furthermore, the 2021, 22 budget will probably be as challenging, if not more. The current year's school budget was approved by the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance and the RTM. The amount allocated to the Darien Public Schools should be spent during this school year as the money has already been appropriated for education spending. As you know, the administration has proposed pre-purchasing items this year, which will alleviate other cuts to next year's budget. I support the pre-purchases and I was surprised and dismayed that several of you were in opposition. Again, we have already paid taxes to fund the approved amount. If you return the surplus to the town, I do not trust the Board of Finance will agree to appropriate the funds in the best interest of the students. We were painfully made aware of this during the recent Board of Finance meetings when the Board of Finance was unyielding in allowing the district to create a non-lapsing account. They said that they had no intention of harming the students' experiences, but actions speak louder than words. Furthermore, based on comments from Board of Finance members, it seems that they have personal issues with the administration, the Board of Ed and CDSP, the latter being a stalwart champion of our students. New iPads are a necessity for the incoming freshmen. They need devices for one-to-one learning and the devices that the seniors are turning in are largely unusable and don't support the Logitech Crayon. Given this information, I don't understand why some Board of Ed members are opposed to this purchase. What do you propose that incoming freshmen use, if anything? Many of you are aware of past grievances regarding uniform replacement for high school sports teams and are aware of the need to purchase new uniforms before they fall apart. We have the money to buy these uniforms now and should do so. Speaking of sports, inequity across sports has been a major issue for years, causing frustration among athletes and parents. Inequity has been discussed during every budget season and you even spent several hours one summer discussing the topic, yet you did not arrive at a solution. We have put off the deep dive year after year, but this may be the year that we finally take the plunge. If you decide to cut the new assistant coaches from the budget, then you need to look at each sport and determine whether or not cuts are appropriate. Cutting freshman sports will do nothing to address the inequity. I hope that you can rise above partisanship and do what is right for our students. After all, that is why we elected you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zerby. Our next speaker?
Beth Lane. You are unmuted and recognized.
Hello, this is Beth Lane at 16 Hillcrest Avenue. And I wanted to say first of all, like, thank you very much to Dr. Adley and to all the principals who did such a great job communicating really throughout the entire COVID crisis and did an extra good job communicating about all of the challenging situations going on in our country now. I cannot tell you how appreciative we are. We're extremely appreciative. Now onto the budget. I'd like to say that all my comments on the budget, I'm speaking as a parent. I have three children in the Darien Schools. I have a senior, I have a freshman and I have a fifth grader. And I would like to say first of all, that I have looked at everything throughout this whole budget season. I listened several times to the Board of Finance say that they absolutely did not want to make any cuts that would affect programming for children. And yet it now seems that we're at a point where we want to, we are talking about eliminating safety patrol from elementary schools, all the inner murals, freshman sports, third grade strings. Might I add that string instruments, if COVID goes on long enough, are probably going to be the only kind of musical experience that we can safely have because most other instruments require forceful exhalations of air in order to make them work, whereas strings do not. So despite every, every protestation from the Board of Finance, we're now talking about cuts to things that will directly and greatly impact children who have not been together for some months now. And now we're talking about eliminating the ways for them to come back together, assuming that we can do so safely. So needless to say, I strongly urge you to do as much pre-buying as possible. My senior turned in her iPad today and I can tell you that while it was limping along and we managed for e-learning, I would hate to give it to a freshman. I don't think it will be effective. And we might be doing e-learning on and off for some time to come. So I would love the Board of Education members who are opposed to pre-buying, explain what exactly they would plan to do instead. I urge you all, regardless of what you've discussed in your meeting that was not made public, to seriously consider pre-buying as there is real, I have yet to hear a really good reason not to, except that you say, I don't agree with it. That's not a very good reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lane. Our next speaker?
Brian Erdlin. You are recognized and unmuted or will be in a moment?
Okay, Mr.- Good evening. Good evening. My name is Brian Erdlin. I live at 2 Little Brook Road and I'm a proud parent of three Darien Public School students. I'd like to start by thanking our town officials, board members, school administrators, and most importantly, our incredible teachers for guiding our students through what has been one of the most unexpected and challenging times. Your resiliency, ingenuity, dedication and compassion have been on full display and speak volumes about the high character of this community and have provided our children with a learning experience they will probably never fully appreciate. Looking forward, we know that there will be additional challenges ahead and any available resources we can give our children, I hope would be fully supported by this board. So tonight, like many others before me, in fact, everyone before me, I'd ask you to strongly consider using a portion of this year's budget to pre-buy many of the items we know our children will need next year and beyond to ensure their continued growth and success. My understanding is that some of these items are available at favorable terms as a result of the current business climate, so it seems silly not to take advantage. Even after these purchases are made, a substantial sum would be left over to add back to the town's already overfunded general fund. I appreciate the time. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Erdlin. And our next speaker?
Anne Reed. You are recognized.
Hi, my name is Anne Reed. I live at 15 Libby Lane. My son went through the elementary portion of the Darien Schools and I have been involved in the budget process since about 2007, first as a parent and then-
Dad!
That was bad.
Nice work.
Nice work.
And I was, I didn't know you were doing this. I saw you raise your hand on the thing and I was like, what the heck?
Mr. Erdlin, like, that's like-
Good job, Dad.
All right, Anne, I'm going to restart your time.
Okay. So in short, I was involved in the budget process as a parent for many years and now I am on the RTM and I have been chairman of the RTM Education Committee and I'm still on the RTM Education Committee. My point is that I've been through many budget seasons. I have seen arguments between members of the Board of Ed, Board of Ed and parents, Board of Finance, RTM, all of that. But everybody has always worked for what's best for the children, what's best for the students in this town. Everybody has always wanted that and it has won out in the end. And this budget season has been very difficult. Not during the initial process, Dr. Adley gave us a good budget. We worked proactively through it. It was doing fine and then COVID hit. At this point, I just want to urge the members of the Board of Ed who are thinking of not voting for pre-buying to please rethink your positions. It makes the most sense. There is no need to return this money to the general fund. The general fund is very well, is very well funded. And if we can use the money to pre-buy, which is not new, it's been done before. And we can save, you know, just by pre-buying $55,000 to, to get the stuff we're going to need anyway. It just makes- it just makes the most sense. I can't think of any other reason why people would not vote to pre-buy. And it will maintain the experience that we have come to expect of our, that our students will receive in our education system. And I think all of us want the best experience for our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Our next speaker?
Teresa, you are recognized to speak.
Hi, Teresa Vogt, 22 Circle Road. I just want to quickly state that I am also for the pre-buy. It just makes the best financial sense. Unfortunately, what I'm seeing right now is that we're thinking today. We are not thinking one, two, three years out. We are going to have difficult budget seasons for several years to come. To use money we have now without having to go back for appropriations from the Board of Finance, that makes smart financial sense, to take advantage of that, because we're going to have a couple of tough budget seasons ahead of us. Let's not make it that much harder by not doing a pre-buy for no good reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vogt.
Mr. Josh Baronbaum? Sorry, Mr. Baronbaum, bear with me. There we go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. My name is Josh Baronbaum. I live at 18 Phillips Lane. I have two girls in the public school system. And I was just going to log on tonight to express my extremely strong support for the pre-buy program. And it looks like I'm bringing up the caboose here from a participant perspective on the public comments. And I'm just so, almost overwhelmed and so proud of all of my fellow, you know, family members in Darien that have gotten on themselves and spoken up for the pre-buy program tonight as well. From my perspective, just when I, you know, from what I've been reading in the patch and what I can find, when you hear about, you know, the surplus, which other people have already mentioned tonight, that's already been tax-appropriated for education, potentially being returned to our, you know, AAA-rated, overfunded, you know, Darien General Fund, it's just disturbing when we're also talking about everything that everybody has brought up on this call, in terms of cuts to, you know, art teachers, extracurriculars, freshman sports. It just doesn't make any sense. I guess, you know, all of our kids have been just incredibly impacted this year by COVID. And this surplus is one small ray of sunshine that we actually have here. And we actually have an option to pre-buy for our kids and not impact their, what they have, their offerings for next year. I just don't know why we wouldn't do it. That's why I logged on tonight to be able to speak and just have my voice heard. I love this town. I love our schools. I love our teachers. I love our principal. And I really think it's important for, you know, for the Board of Education to listen to their constituents. And I think, you know, if this isn't a convincing showing of people logging on, you know, at bedtime for their kids to be able to convince you that you should support this budget and the pre-buy program, I don't know what would be. Separately, just one more comment. You know, one of the other members tonight mentioned the wonderful access that, you know, the school has given us to our, to commentary from, you know, and feedback on how to handle COVID and everything that we've seen over the last couple of weeks. I'd also just like to say the access that you've given us to the math program, particularly Math in Focus online, being able, as a parent, to be able to track and help my kid. I haven't been able to do that in the past, and I really appreciate it. But really, the reason for me logging on tonight is being able to voice my very strong support for the pre-buy program, just like almost everybody else who dialed in tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baronbaum. And our next speaker?
That is it, in terms of raised hands. I have no other raised hands.
Okay, let's just give everyone a minute in case we have technical difficulties. But I would like to say thank you, Dr. McGeadigan, for helping us make this work. It's nice to hear voices again of the public in person.
It's my pleasure.
Okay. With that, we will go on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Adley?
Good evening, everybody, and again, thank you for joining us tonight. It's very nice to see you, literally see you. And it was nice yesterday to go around the schools and actually see people in person, in terms of the kids coming through the schools and the wonderful job that our staff were doing. It was nice to see everybody. We usually see everybody from the way stop and these things. But it was just a nice day to see people and reconnect again. Thank you for, all the community members, our staff are just doing a phenomenal job yesterday, from receiving the kids during the drive-throughs to the pickup, which were so well organized for people. Just a tremendous job. So thank you for everyone for your participation. We do have a couple of events happening this week, which is the middle school. We also have Ox Ridge ELP kids, we drive-through also. And then we have the high school at the end of the week. We were, just as a reminder, we do have July 30, 23rd, and the August 1st set aside. If we were able to do some sort of version, I think we will do some sort of version of an in-person graduation, given that some of the requirements were lessened a little bit to about 150 participants. So the word on that is that that could increase, but depending on the pattern of COVID-19, it could also decrease. So we'll proceed accordingly as soon as Thursday, our students go into the summer vacation, to sort of plan that in detail. We also have the virtual up and running. As you know, we did make the national news this past Friday, and I did provide a media statement in response. I just want to thank our parents for collaborating with the school district and helping our children make sense of the images and events that are on television and social media, particularly during a time when we're not in school. Your partnership on that task is appreciated. As someone, one of our staff members said, normally, we would indicate and communicate with parents about sensitive things that we discuss and have support for them. These things just landed on the television and on their phones and asked to make sense of it. So thank you for, again, partnering in that important work. I want to recognize that since the last meeting, there have been a number of academic recognition ceremonies. That's from the Math National Honor Society, the Senior Awards Night, and the Virtual Achievers Night. Congratulations to all those students who were recognized. The vision of the graduate work continues, as does the Strategic Planet with Dr. Lemond. We've had another meeting. Dr. Lemond will be present at the next meeting here for the board for an update. And the next meeting of the Strategic Planet group is at June 15th from 1:00 to 3:00. Lunches will continue to be served through the rest of the week until it closes school year. Ox Ridge Building Committee continues to meet to reduce the budget deficit, which is close to do, and to finalize the actual design features of the building. Despite COVID-19, we've had a very good interviewing season thus far, even though it's through this particular format. We anticipate the middle school assistant principal being announced at the next Board of Education meeting. And between now and then, other appointments, and Marge will give an update tonight on some of the appointments that we've already made. The closing and reopening task force has really transitioned into the reopening. There's been a lot of work that's been done on closing school, pickup, processes, cleaning, access for building for our staff members also. That has now transitioned into the reopening, and we do have a agenda item for that. We'll talk about it then. The last day of school is this district, this Thursday. And above all else, we certainly wish you a safe and peaceful and relaxing summer vacation. We will keep you apprised of the work of the board and the administration. That will continue, that will continue the work throughout the summer. But I wish our families an enjoyable vacation. I'm not quite sure where you're going to go, but I'm sure you'll make some memories along the way nonetheless.
Okay, great. We will move on to the approval minutes. It's requested the board approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on May 26, 2020. May I have a motion? Mr. Maroney, seconded by Mr. Dunne, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Deb, Mr. Brown has had to step out of the meeting. Mrs. McCammon, I can't see you. Could you just, oh, there you are. There you are. So that is all in favor. Mr. Brown will abstain. Or he had to step out. We will move on to board committee reports? Seeing none. We'll move on to presentation and discussion. It was requested that we add an agenda item discussing the letter to the media on comments made by cable news entertainment show. May I have a motion to add that to the agenda? Mr. Seeny so moves in a second. Mr. Maroney, seconds, all in favor? I think, Mrs. Ritchie, are you in favor? I just can't see your hand. Okay, so that is Mr. Dunne, Mr. Maroney, Mr. Seeny, Mrs. McCammon, Mrs. Stein, Mr. Burke in favor, opposed, Mrs. Ritchie. And any abstentions? Seeing none, the motion carries. Are there any other motions before we move forward?
Just, is Mr. Brown not there?
Mr. Brown is no longer in the meeting. We will move that under, we'll do item A, item B, because we both have our superintendent and our retirees, and we will make that item C and move down from there. Thank you, everyone. So, without further ado, another great evening for the board, the Superintendent Citizenship Award recipients. Dr. Adley?
Delighted to be able to recognize some of our very special students. And ordinarily, this would take place in person, but certainly don't want to miss this opportunity. I certainly will make a wee special visit to our students to make sure that they receive their certificates, and they'll be recognized at the school where they will be memorialized prominently at a prominent location. My understanding that the Superintendent Citizenship Award in Darien has been here since the mid-'70s. And the criteria for the award is that the students show concern for and respect the right of others, demonstrate service to the school community through participation in clubs, school activities, and our school, our community activities, demonstrates responsible behavior, demonstrates courtesy behavior in his or her interactions with peers and adults, demonstrates unselfish behavior in her interactions with peers and adults. Recipients are nominated by the class members, staff, who also are participating in the voting process. And with that, we generally come through with a fifth grader, an eighth grader, and then several high school students. So tonight, I'm delighted to be able to recognize a variety of students in some ways. And we can certainly start off with the fifth grade. Let me say for the fifth grade, first of all, I had an opportunity to read some books to the kids over this COVID-19. And those books spoke to a lot of different things, from friendship to empathy, support, struggle, resilience, and doing the best you can. And it's with that background that I'm delighted that our principals and our staff have actually maybe deviated or rebet from process, but they're actually going to dedicate, and thrilled to support the dedication of the Superintendent Citizenship Award is dedicated to the entire fifth-grade class across the district who have stepped up during this absolutely unique time period in their lives, that we will recognize them at the school and perpetuate, and they will be there for all their great efforts. I know this will be a special memory in their minds for years to come. And with that, I would like to pass it over to Mary McElton. Mary, obviously, is the principal of Token Lake, and she would like to speak on behalf of all the principals and on behalf of all the fifth-grade students across the district. Mary?
On behalf of the five elementary school principals, students, and staff, we are pleased to announce that the 2020 recipient of the Superintendent Citizenship Award be awarded to the entire Darien Public School fifth-grade student body. We believe these students are deserving of this recognition because of the resiliency, flexibility, kindness, and collegiality that they have demonstrated during the COVID-19 pandemic. Each elementary school lives by the simple but powerful set of values, our school code. This outstanding class has embodied this code by showing kindness and acceptance of their peers and their teachers throughout the year with a particularly admirable degree of respect to all during these last few challenging months. The fifth-grade class of 2020 has been responsible about staying engaged in e-learning and respectful about demonstrating appropriate online behavior. Throughout this trying time, our fifth graders remain positive, creative, and helpful to their families, friends, and community. We are so very proud of them and of all these wonderful students and believe that their collective resolve, in the face of such unique circumstances, should be recognized by this important annual tradition. Congratulations to the Darien Public Schools fifth-grade class of 2020.
So for all the fifth-grade parents who are home watching with their children, give them a good pat in the back.
What a nice way to honor this class. Thank you to the principals and to the superintendent and to all our fifth graders who have earned it. Move on to middlesex?
Sure. For middlesex, hi, this is George. George, I don't know if you're online or not at the moment. If I think, I might get this wrong, George. I thought you were a Chelsea supporter, but I could be wrong, but I think I've noticed you're wearing a Chelsea shirt around school. But with that, I'm delighted to introduce George Shelley, who will, the middle school principal, who will say a few words on his behalf. Shelley, you there?
Yes. Sorry, I thought you were muting me. The Superintendent's Award honors an eighth grader who has demonstrated exemplary citizenship while at middlesex. This means that in addition to understanding and upholding all of our school norms, the recipient retreats all people with acceptance and respect. This year's award winner, George Childs, does this and much more. George greets each day with a smile. Eager to excel, he embraces new learning, new friendships, and new challenges. Active in both the school and the community, George is a natural leader who is admired by both his peers and his teachers. Congratulations, George. You have certainly earned this recognition.
Congratulations, George.
We turn to the high school, and Sophia and Kai have been participating in the senior awards, and they've already received their awards. But we have many students at the high school who are going to go on and destined to lead and potentially solve problems that we're dealing with today and everything in between them. But I know these are two students who have been chosen because not only do they lead with their head, but they lead also with their heart. And with that, I'll turn over to Principal Dunn, who will say a few remarks on her behalf.
Thank you. It's my pleasure and honor to be here to talk about Sophia and Kai tonight. Sophia is a true Renaissance woman, an exceptional student with an inquisitive mind, star of the stage, and fierce athletic competitor on the volleyball court. Teachers and peers delight in her sharp wit and outstanding intellect, which light up every classroom. She has pursued a highly rigorous program of studies at DHS and has excelled in every arena. Sophia thrives as a member of a team, which has drawn her to theater and volleyball, where she has left an indelible mark on both programs. Her teachers recently described her as an understated leader, one who sets and examples for others of empathy, compassion, and humility. It is a testament to her character that she has been chosen by both her teachers and peers for this honor, one that recognizes students who change DHS for the better. Sophia is mature beyond her years, and she takes on challenges with determination and tenacity, understanding that perseverance fosters growth and strengthens us for what lies ahead. Sophia will be missed in the halls, in the classrooms, on the stage, and on the courts of DHS. Northwestern School of Communication will be fortunate to welcome her in the fall. Congratulations, Sophia. We are so very proud of you.
Congratulations, Sophia.
And Kai, Joe. Kai is an exceptional young man who is at the center of everything at Darien High School. As the president of the Community Council, Kai leads with generosity of spirit, a collaborative nature, and a... nature, and a hopefulness for the future. As a student, Kai is driven, motivated, and possesses an incredible intellect. His love for music, listening, and performing is a gift he has shared with the orchestra, and his humor and humility are legendary. His wisdom and eagerness to listen intently to others makes him a student who engages others in discourse, challenging them to consider and reconsider ideas, improving learning for all. Kai is respected by faculty and peers alike and approaches every interaction with ease. He leads with his genuine concern for others, and this is evidenced by his patience, his desire to know every student at DHS, and his involvement in post-53, which has fueled his passion to pursue a career in the medical field. It is no surprise that Kai is planning a career in the service of others. He has personified what Blue Wave Pride is all about, and he has forever changed DHS because of his contributions. Dartmouth has hit the jackpot. We can't wait to see where the next adventure takes you. Congratulations, Kai.
Congratulations, Kai, and congratulations to all of tonight's recipients. Thank you to the principals and the superintendent for recognizing.
Thank you. I can't think of a better way to formally kick off the board meeting tonight. Congratulations to our students, especially young people.
And you know what? It's the perfect segue into all the teachers who have impacted their lives and are retiring from us, but all they have done for the students. So we will move on to the recognition of Darien Public Schools' retirees, Mrs. Stein.
I think Dr. Adley.
I have Marge on there, but okay, Dr. Adley, it's all you.
Good evening, and to our special guests too, our students and also our retirees. I know this is not the normal process, and so I'm learning what tradition is in the district, but I know this is a little bit different given the circumstances that we're facing. Ordinarily, there would be a wee bit of a reception that would accompany this, and you would get your, what I think is a pewter bowl or some description. We'll certainly make sure that you get that. But certainly, the board and administration and your colleagues would not want to miss the opportunity to recognize our employees for their significant contributions to the children of Darien for many, for generations. So probably collectively over the year, I'm thinking that you've probably outlasted administrators, but I know you have, you've outlasted administrators, building projects, new educational initiatives, and any number of acronyms along the way. And you're probably in the central services, probably drives you crazy in doing your work. But thank you for all you, all you do. Collectively over the years, you've seen generations of kids and classes come and go. You've also contributed in a number of ways through clubs, sports, activities, and other opportunities that make kids life special in many special ways that we sometimes we don't see. And then the important one shared that all that is not given is lost. You certainly have not lost anything because you've given everything over the years. In his book, Learned by Heart, Roland Mars suggests that most of us became educators because we wanted to use our hearts as well as our minds in order to promote young people's learning, because we believe deeply that learning is one of the most noblest, most profound endeavors of human experience, and because we are firmly committed to the values of learning in a democratic community. Our honorees this evening are representative of those beliefs. The administrators will do a wee bit of introduction in a moment. Just sure that I'm going to give you something else that will find its way to you at your home. My favorite book, that the kids know what my favorite book is, and have been reading this to kindergarteners and students up and down the system, and at some point it will reach our seniors. So it's a, it's a give and trade, and you're probably very familiar with this book, certainly our retirees would be. And it tells the story of the tree who gives everything for a student. So I want to share this book with you, your own scripted copy, but just in recognition of the unconditional love and support that you have shown and dedication to young people here in Darien and the unconditional love you've exhibited along the way. And we hope that in retirement time, that you too, just as the tree was at the end, will be happy. And if you go your separate ways on Friday, you have one more day to go after Thursday, may the road rise to meet you, may the wind be always at your back, may the sun shine warmly upon your face, and the rains fall softly upon your fields. And until we meet again, may you be safe, COVID-19 free, and be happy. So leading up, we have Alan Dunn, who's a high school principal, and we're pleased to recognize Connie Holyfield Boyd. Connie Holyfield Boyd has been here for 22 years in the capacity of secretary. And I don't know if she had another position, she could tell me that, but maybe Alan can.
We have the tradition at Darien High School of providing or presenting honorary diplomas to all of our retirees each year. And so for Connie, the honorary diploma goes as follows. Administrative Assistant Extraordinaire, Curator of Literature, Trusted Polly, Organizer of Awards, Future Pre-Bear of Real Estate, Devoted Mother and Grandmother. Connie Boyd Holyfield, over the last 22 years, you have worked to support teachers of Darien High School in the English, History, and World Languages Departments. In fact, at the time of your retirement earlier this year, you had been in the departments longer than most of your colleagues. Your work behind the scenes enabled teachers to work directly with students as you accomplished the many tasks that would have taken their time away from instruction. Always the consummate professional, you noticed when things needed tending and made certain it was accomplished without fanfare. Connie, you are a kind, compassionate person whose winning smile brought a sense of calm to every environment. You have already been missed at Darien High School, and we hope new adventures have begun in earnest. On behalf of the faculty and staff of Darien High School, you are hereby awarded this honorary diploma with the deepest gratitude for your significant contributions to the students and staff of Darien High School. Thank you, Connie.
Sorry, thank you, Connie. It's a little awkward as we clap and say thank you, but thank you, Connie.
Jeff, Beth Shapiro, I can't think of a more needy, needy teaching job title at this point than school psychologist. And I think for over 27 years, Beth has been doing that work, and it's somewhat, the picture is very apropos for a dog with a wee bit of a psychologist. So Beth, congratulations to you, and thank you for your service.
Baker Extraordinaire, Thoughtful Friend, Meme Aficionado, Tender of Peonies, Protector of the Vulnerable, Master of Shorthand, Generous Benefactor, Respected Polly, Devoted Wife, Loving Mother and Grandmother. Beth Shapiro, for 43 years, 22 in Darien, you have responded as a school psychologist to the needs of your students. The consummate professional, you are admired for your dedication to the students in your care as well as to your colleagues. For years, you have secretly purchased presents during the holidays for your students when you were aware of a need in the family. You didn't think I knew that, I know that. You've been the special person to so many students who no doubt look back at a turbulent time in their life and remember your kindness and support. You have shown compassion to families who face challenges with their children during times of tremendous stress, and you have shown them the road ahead. They will be forever grateful, and it is quite a legacy to leave behind. We thank you and wish you every happiness in your retirement, Beth. On behalf of the faculty and staff of Darien High School, you're hereby awarded this honorary diploma with the deepest gratitude for your significant contribution to the students and staff of Darien High School. Thank you, Beth.
Congratulations, Beth. We're syncing up.
Mr. Rob Trufon, teacher, coach, friend to many generations of kids. Rob, you told me if I brought back the Turkey Bowl to Darien, I think it went. I'm just saying. But Coach of the Year, many accolades to go, helped the lives of many kids, Mr. Trufon. Thank you, Rob.
Aspiring golfer, Hall of Fame coach, marine biologist, counter of horseshoe crabs, the Science Department's Benjamin Button, pep rally announcer, collector of photos, trophies, and memories, proud father and husband. Rob, for 26 years at Bryan McMahon and 15 years at Darien High School, you have shared your love of nature and its wonder with your students. You enjoyed uncovering and demystifying biological principles for our ninth grade students, often inspiring them to return before graduating to your marine course where your expertise impressed them. This year, after 41 years of teaching, you embraced with enthusiasm a new lens through which to approach your curriculum because you saw its potential for fostering deeper understanding and meaning for your students. Your Blue Wave spirit will be missed at Darien High School by students and colleagues alike. Our best wishes to you for the next adventure. On behalf of faculty and staff of Darien High School, you are hereby awarded this honorary diploma with our deepest gratitude for your significant contributions to the students and staff of Darien High School. Thank you, Rob.
Congratulations, Rob.
As soon as we move to the middle school and middle school principal, Mrs. Summers, and Gretchen, Fred, Gretchen is a band teacher, and we're talking about, we're talking about music tonight and so on and so forth. There's nothing that we like better than to hear the music of our young people. And Gretchen, I will say that on behalf of all the music teachers, thank you for brightening our lives a little bit over, over COVID-19. It was just uplifting to see during the day, it was just a nice wee break to see that the kids come together, and there's nothing more beautiful, powerful, or gives, in my mind, hope for the future in seeing kids play instruments and sing together. So thank you, and congratulations.
Gretchen has been at Middlesex since 1982, leading our students to love music and to discover their passion. Two of my favorite things about Gretchen, in September, I would walk down the music hallway, and I'd be like, oh, this is going to be rough. How is she ever going to get them to play together at a decent speed in time for the concert? And somehow, every single year, Gretchen, you have done that in such a wonderful, outstanding way. My other favorite memory that you don't know about is that I, from my conference room where I start my day, I have, I can see you directing the crosswalk out my window. And when it was your duty, you embraced it as you do everything, and you would put on these very bright gloves, and then the symphony would begin. Because Gretchen, you didn't just direct the students across the crosswalk, you conducted them. It was like watching a symphony. And from the first time I saw you, I knew that meant that you have a song in your heart, and I have appreciated you and what you have contributed to Middlesex for the past four years that I've worked with you. I'm a little envious of your retirement, and only good things will come to you, Gretchen. Thank you, and you will be missed.
Congratulations, Gretchen.
So Susan, Susan Morrison has been part of the IDA program. I don't know if she's been there for 17 years at the middle school, that I don't know, but it's about 17 years that Susan's have been in the district advocating for our brightest and best students. So we appreciate that advocacy, particularly tonight, if I might add. But thank you for your, for your service for the, for all our students, in particular the students participating in the IDA program.
Susan, I thank you for challenging our students at Middlesex for the past 17 years. You came to us from Greenwich, a wise, a wise move. And my favorite memory, Susan, is observing your classes on the time and space continuum that left all of us wondering where we would end up and left me behind in your classroom after the students left, to get a little clarification on exactly where you felt we were on that continuum. I really appreciate that you've spent all your time encouraging students to think creatively and critically. Thank you, Susan, for all you've done for our school.
Congratulations, and thank you, Susan.
Karen, Anne Marshall. Karen, I think you've been here for about 20 years, and there's, nobody loves the kids more than paraprofessionals. That's just called, like, they do. And they play such an instrumental and critical role in the life of our, our school district. Our students love them just as much as they love, love our students, and our, our teachers depend on our paraprofessional every single day, from supporting in the classroom to physical health and safety outside. So thank you for 20 years of dedicated work, Karen. And I think it's Karen, right? Karen of Royal?
Hi. So I'm so excited to speak about Karen tonight, even though I've only known her this year. Karen began working in Darien in October of 2000 in the DHS Library Media Center. She came to Royal in 2008 halftime as the library para and spent halftime at Ox Ridge, but in 2013, she became a full-time paraprofessional at Royal, working as a para for our students receiving special education services. Simply put, Karen loves children. She anticipates their needs, comes up with creative ways to re-explain things to them, and gives, gives kids her undivided attention. The classrooms where Karen has worked were stronger as a result of her care and dedication, and the kids absolutely adore her. During e-learning, Karen continued to support our students, even having students just read their favorite books to her on Google Meets. Karen is retiring to New Hampshire and will enjoy some well-deserved rest and relaxation, hopefully tech-free, and time with her children who she adores. On behalf of the entire Royal family, thank you for loving and supporting our students. Best wishes for your next adventure. We will miss you.
Thank you, Karen, and congratulations.
So we traveled across time to Tokonik. Denise Merklin, Denise, I think, close to 30, 30 years of dedicated service. I don't know if Denise has been across the district or not, but I'll be curious to hear how long she's been in Tokonik or how long she's been in other parts of the school system. But Denise, thank you for 30 years of dedicated service to some of our youngest students. Thank you. This is Michaelson.
I forgot to unmute. That's the word of the, of the last four months. Unmute, unmute. So for Denise, Denise Merklin, you've been in Darien for quite a while, but before you came to Darien, you, you graduated from the University of Maryland and taught in Maryland and Virginia, and then after 13 years, you said, oh, let's move north, and you started, and you came to Darien. Since you've come to Darien, you've had the opportunity to teach at Royal and Tokonik schools. While at Royal, she taught fourth and fifth grade, and then coming to Tokonik in 1996, she's been in fourth grade ever since then. And over the past several years, Denise has been one of our grade level leaders. Denise has made an impact on so many children over her 42 successful years from Darien and before. We believe in Darien alone, she has taught approximately over 700 children. That's a lot. Denise has truly enjoyed her many years of teaching. She loved seeing the children grow from the beginning of the school year to the end. Her favorite book to read was Because of Winn-Dixie, and that was due to its deep message, its strong message, looking at friendship and lifelong learning. She has many stories of her wonderful students, field trips that went awry, a story about a dog on the playground and it jumping out the window to get the dog. Denise and her, her husband are looking forward to moving south to play golf, volunteering in her new community, and just to have time with her dogs. Denise will not miss our winter, but we will truly miss her.
Congratulations, Denise, and best wishes.
Judy Muir, nobody protects the, the school, or the principal for that matter, more of, more of. Judy Miro. Nobody protects the, the school, or the principal for that matter, more than the secretary. They are priceless, often the first line of defense, often the first person to put on a Band-Aid before they go to the nurse perhaps. But they seem to do it all. So, Judy, I know that you're going to be missed. Thank you for over two decades of dedicated service to Tokonik Elementary School.
So Judy has been a valuable member of our Tokonik school. She's been our secretary for over 20, or for 21 years. Prior to joining Darien Public Schools, she was at the Scholastic Book Fair as the East Coast Regional Manager and that's where she really became, had her love of children, parents and books. Lost my spot, sorry. She always worked with, and she also worked in her family business as well. Her many years at Miro's New York Bakery has been her life as her father began the business and then her husband and sons have continued it for many years. Upon coming to Tokonik, Judy worked tirelessly in the old school where she loved the, the small school environment and the ability to join in so many conversations. Judy was the hub of our wheel. Judy made the school run so smoothly. From assisting two principals, greeting the children with her special smile and being a kind ear to the staff, she was truly a gift. Judy joyfully ran the office while greeting everyone with a friendly hello to our school. You would see children visiting Judy every day from doing the morning announcements, checking in on messages for teachers or just needing to talk to her about the playground. Students came to Judy for Band-Aids, hugs and advice. Her welcoming attitude and kind nature is paramount to Tokonik's success. The staff enjoyed Judy's Friday treats, her bottomless supply of candy and a laugh to share when we needed one. Judy never left her desk. She didn't leave it for lunch. She didn't leave it ever because she cared so much that our school ran smoothly. She's left a huge impact on the Tokonik community. Judy and her husband are looking forward to spending much more time with their children, grandchildren and her siblings who that live outside of Connecticut. We will miss Judy so much.
Thank you, Judy. Congratulations.
I only think that the, the next person who loves a school more than the secretary is perhaps a custodian. And Crow Snyder, Crow Snyder is a character who's well-known in the district and devoted to the kids and the staff at Tokonik Elementary School. So, Crow, thank you for close to 30 years of service and the pride you take in your work every day. Thank you.
So Crow has been working in Darien for 30 years. In 1990, he began at the Town Public Works Department and then three years later, he joined Darien Public Schools. He's worked at Darien High School, Royal, Holmes, Middlesex and for the past five years at Tokonik and for the past couple of years as our head custodian. Crow always enjoyed talking with the children, finding out how they were doing and lending a helping hand when they needed one. The students looked forward to Crow's hearty hellos and kept an eye on all of the students. The students loved reporting to Crow about their lockers and things that needed to be done. They knew how hard he worked to keep our school running smoothly and beautiful. During lunch, the students would stop by and tell Crow about their outside activities and he loved hearing about their hobbies and sporting events. Every day that Crow came to school, his focus was on the children. He loved being with the children. Crow is looking forward to new challenges and adventures. He said he just can't ask for much more. His life has been blessed and filled with purpose. Life is too short and he's going to, and he's going to enjoy his retirement. We will miss you and wish you the best. Thanks, Crow.
Best wishes, Crow.
So Alicia Kusick is going to introduce the nurse. I have to tell him very partially, the nurse is going to my wife, the nurse. And Maureen is one of the finest, I can't effect. Maureen, I enjoy, I don't know if you're online, but I enjoyed our chats in the school. I enjoyed your stories of my homeland and I do want to thank you for the Irish Christmas pudding that went down, just a delight. It looks like you have your arms full of more blessings to come in the years ahead. And thank you for all you do as a school nurse for the health and wellness and safety of our, our young people. Thank you.
All right. Maureen, Keneffex Retirement, this spring brings an end to 45 years of working as a registered nurse. We were fortunate to have Maureen join the nursing staff of the Darien Public Schools in the fall of 2013 after a 20-plus-year career at Stanford Hospital. During her seven years as a school nurse, Maureen has worked with students, families and staff in three different schools, Tokonik, Darien High School and most recently Ox Ridge School. Maureen's coworkers had the following to say about Maureen. "Maureen is a wealth of knowledge and always advocated for her patients in the hospital and then for her students in school, helping out any way she could. As a coworker, she was always a pleasure to work with and she always had a warm smile for everyone. I will miss our collaborating on health office work and helping our students as a team." Another team member said, "I appreciated Maureen's sense of humor and pragmatic approach to school health issues. She was a great resource for her coworkers with her deep roots in the area and her many contacts in the healthcare community." And another nurse said, "If you know Maureen, she's a tell it like it is kind of person and I love that. She has great energy, asks good, meaningful questions and has creative way of, a creative way of problem solving. It's sad to lose her as a coworker, but we are happy for her and now she'll have time for more adventures. Maureen, I appreciate your sense of humor and taking a genuine interest in being the best nurse you could be, even in your 45th year. You showed us that you can always master something new. Your care and concern went beyond the students, family and staff in the building. I thank you for your hard work and dedication to all of us who are part of the Darien Public Schools and for your years of taking care of all those who crossed your path. We wish you the best in your second career as grandma. I feel certain you'll be wildly successful. I hope I can speak for all of us when I wish you a future filled with many happy and special moments, whether it be here in Connecticut or abroad in your beloved home in Ireland. Best wishes, Maureen. We'll miss you."
Thank you for all of your service, Maureen.
And so, on behalf of the maintenance custodial staff, Mr. Lynch is going to speak to some of our custodial and maintenance staff. Tom Mosha, Tom's been like 36 years and free agency, like he does that, 36 years of service. That is absolutely terrific. Tom, congratulations for all of your work around the district. There's always something to keep you busy right here in terms of carpentry. But thank you for your work and for what you have done across the district. Thank you. Mr. Lynch?
Okay, a few words about Tommy Mo, as he's known. Tommy's born and raised in Stanford, hired at Darien Schools as a carpenter in 1984. And Tommy Mo has built himself a reputation here as a dedicated craftsman, always took great pride in his work. Tom would make a point of talking to any staff member where he was working in the room to make sure he had done exactly what they wanted and needed. The schools have many examples of Tommy's fine carpentry and furniture-making skills, including shelves, bookcases, cabinets and desks. He was also always willing to set his tools aside to help any of his coworkers when another set of hands were needed to complete a project. Tommy was also known to cancel his vacation time if he felt there was too much work needing to be done. We wish him well in retirement.
Thank you, Tommy. Thank you for all your years here in Darien.
Okay. A custodian, also, I think, over 25 years, Keith Shee at Darien High School. Congratulations, Keith. Thank you for all of your work and dedication. Thank you.
And that's an interesting picture of Keith Shee because that's probably one of the only times you'll ever see him without a hat on. Keith is a graduate of Darien High School. He previously worked in customer service in Greenwich, Connecticut before coming to Darien in 1995. He began as a part-time night cleaner, became a full-time custodian one and he finished his career as the Assistant Head Custodian at Darien High School. Keith was one of these guys that was always early to work and he knew all the players and all the various groups of people that use the schools on the weekends. And in the spare time, Keith enjoys spending time with his extensive model train collection. And we remember Keith as a loyal, hard-working school employee who enjoyed discussing current events and high school sports with students and staff.
Thank you, Keith, and good luck.
So, Art Keeloua has been our groundskeeper for over 30 years. And that is a bit of a challenge to keep our grounds, that prime condition for that length of time. Congratulations to you, sir, and thank you for beautifying the campuses. Thank you.
And a few things about Art. Art was born and raised in the Philippines, immigrated to the United States after graduating from the University of Manila. He worked as an area manager in marketing and sales for medical equipment for 20 years before deciding to switch careers to buildings and grounds maintenance. In 1988, Art was hired as a grounds worker at Darien Schools. During his time here, Art has earned a reputation as a friendly, helpful coworker. Several years ago, we renovated the courtyard at Middlesex, which had grown into a huge jungle. And we renovated it and we gave Art the job of maintaining it and keeping it in good condition. And he did. It looks, it still looks the same way it did when it was renovated two years ago. He takes great pride in this and the area has been joined by many students and staff. This is just one example of Art always doing the little extra things to make the Darien Schools run properly. We wish him well in retirement.
Thank you, Art. We wish you well.
So Linda, Linda, when, when she's left, I think she sort of said, you'll never see me again, but I hope I can see you tonight. And I hope you're, I hope you're online. I have to say that I miss your welcome and smile every morning when I come up the stairs, particularly, I may say, during this period of COVID-19. And I'm delighted to say we have a guest speaker tonight. We welcome back Dr. De Silva, who's going to speak on Linda's behalf. Welcome back, Susan. It's nice to see you again. We talk pretty regularly, but other than that, it's nice to welcome you back officially at Darien at a board meeting.
Hi, everyone. It's a privilege and honor to be here tonight and even more so to share a few words about Linda Piero. Linda's service at Darien began long before my time. Linda supported educators for 17 years, not only as the assistant to the assistant superintendent, but as a paraprofessional supporting children. I suppose that's why Linda is truly an amazing professional in every way. It was always so clear how Linda cared deeply about students despite not working directly with them anymore. She understood and cared for teachers, always tending to the smallest of details that would make a difference for the teachers, but most importantly, for their students. In addition to being incredibly smart, Linda's warmth and kindness resonated in everything she did. Linda's ability to work with so many different groups, parents, teachers, administrators, was inspirational. Somehow, some way, Linda made everyone feel incredibly special with a simple word or the stroke of her keyboard. Every encounter that Linda would have with someone, I would know about it. I would know about it because of the way she made people feel. Everyone loved Linda, but I made it clear she was my Linda. For five years, I hit the lottery. I had Linda by my side in ways that were far beyond the scope of her work. Linda tended to every detail, looking ahead and in many ways, pre-teaching me. Linda has the heart of a teacher. I never worried about a thing. Beyond the scope of the big things, like managing hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of grants, Linda tended to the small things. For example, when I wore two different shoes, she gave me another pair. Not the pair off of her feet, of course, but rather the pair off of her colleague Sandy's feet. She reminded me that I stayed up too late and it was time to go home. For every mistake I made, she made it sound like it was her mistake or even better, on occasion, someone else's. When it was time for Linda to retire and she was asked to stay just a bit longer, she did. When it was time for Linda to retire again and we asked her to stay just a bit longer, she did. When it was time for Linda to really retire, she did. Asking to come back so that she can transition her successor, she did. Only leaving when she knew we were ready. Linda always had the heart of a teacher. During my time, Linda, you were a colleague, a guide and most importantly, a friend. And I know this is, that feeling is shared by everyone on this Zoom tonight and everyone who has had the opportunity and the gift to work with you. Thank you, Linda, to your many, many years of service, your care for Darien, its students, teachers, parents and administrators has left its mark. You're truly a gift and now that gift will be shared with those beautiful grandchildren of yours. May you have health, happiness, family and friends in your retirement.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you for our surprise guest speaker. We wish you well too, Dr. De Silva. And I, I can join in and say, Linda, we, we miss your smile every day. So, we wish you well.
Congratulations, Linda.
So every now and again, you come across like a, some wise, wonderful and beautiful people. And Janet Rivers is one of those people who works in, in special services. And just a delight to see every day with her smile and her welcome comments. And Shirley's going to have a few words on Janet's behalf.
Good evening. This evening, we honor and celebrate our esteemed colleague, Janet Rivers. Janet began working in Darien in 1991 when Clark and Janet's daughter began kindergarten at Tokonik. Janet began a career as a paraprofessional in what was then the beginning of ELP at Tokonik. As the program expanded, Janet moved over to Henley and again helped transition the program of ELP over to Henley. Shortly after, she was asked to help transition over to Royal and remained at Royal. Shortly after ELP at Royal, Janet, after five years, moved on to become an administrative assistant over at Middlesex. In her capacity there for three years, she worked at managing the IP direct system and for all management systems for students at Middlesex. And because of her Herculean and extraordinary efforts, everyone was kind enough to offer her the opportunity to manage DHS as well. Janet maintained and monitored all aspects of IP direct student management system for MMS and DHS. And during her tenure there, established caring, lifelong relationships and friendships with students, colleagues and families at both Middlesex and Darien High School. Shortly after that, Janet was recognized for her exemplary efforts, her successes and her managerial skills and was asked to join the Special Education Department over at Central Office. Janet is a true Renaissance woman. She can fix anything in our dreaded IP Connecticut system, knows all the ins and outs of state reporting and has the most perfect cursive penmanship, knows every rule of grammar, is always up to speed on everything that's happening in Washington, can arrive with perfectly ironed white tape balloons for a staff holiday after five minutes' notice and has seen every film and knows every actor. Loves the Beatles, has the patience of a saint and takes care of us all. Janet has supported colleagues with grace, knowledge. There has not been a day in Darien where a staff member doesn't call for Janet to rescue them or to say thank you. It is with gratitude, affection and appreciation that we thank you, Janet, for all that you have given to students, teachers and colleagues and families here in Darien. You will be truly missed and then some. We wish you, Clark, your daughters and grandson Finn, wonderful and joyful short naps on the beach. Thank you, Janet, for taking such good care of us.
Thank you, Janet.
Congratulations, Janet. Thank you.
Mr. Rood is going to introduce Judy. Judy is just a wonderful person, just lovely. But she gets things done. Nothing gets done here if we don't have our accounts payable up and running. I'm going to miss Judy a lot down in the business department. So Judy, I would thank you for, I guess, like 20, 20 something years of service that you've given to Darien Public Schools. I want to miss you. It was lovely to go down and see your warm, welcome and smile every day. Thank you.
I've only had the pleasure of working with Judy for 10 months. But Judy has been a staple in the business office, working in accounts payable for over two decades. She was dependable, professional and really a true asset to the department who helped keep things running smoothly. And that's definitely even more so now that we're closed, knowing how important that role really is. I know Judy's looking forward to being able to spend time with her husband and her daughter and she certainly has earned the right to enjoy a great retirement. and she certainly has earned the right to enjoy a great retirement after over twenty-five years with the Darien School System. But she will absolutely be missed in the business office.
Thank you, Judy. Best of luck.
Thank you, Judy. Messiah is going to talk on behalf of Debbie Bossi. I like everybody, but I just like Debbie. I'm just sorry to see her go so soon as a drag of the food service. It's such pride in the program. And she did a tremendous job of doing a quick transition for us, sticking around long enough to make sure that transition. But just miss seeing Debbie every morning as she went about her work. Thank you, Debbie. Congratulations. I trust you're happy at home with your daughter. And I think it's March.
It is. When Debbie Bossi retired earlier this year, she had worked in Darien for twenty-three years as our beloved Food Services Director. Prior to coming to Darien, she worked in the food service industry in schools and healthcare facilities throughout Northern Connecticut, and even served as the Regional Food Services Director for Lord &amp; Taylor in West Hartford. I loved that part. Tenure in Darien, Debbie rented an apartment in town, but returned to her home in Colchester each weekend to be near her seven children and many, many grandchildren. While working in Darien, Debbie took many continuing education courses in Wilton and developed a close circle of friends who shared knitting as a hobby. Debbie cared deeply about her Darien family of coworkers. You could always tell when Debbie was having a meeting of her cafeteria managers at the Board of Education offices. The conference room would be beautifully set with flowers at each setting for the managers to take home, and she served food that would make any four-star restaurant feel envy. Debbie also began the wonderful tradition of hosting a real Thanksgiving meal for the people who work in central services. There was always delicious turkey stuffing, potatoes, gravy, vegetables, desserts, rolls, and one year even soup. All of the food was made and served with love, and we returned to our offices feeling cared for despite our food comas. Debbie was a talented, warm, caring, and hardworking member of our Darien team, and we hope that she's enjoying her retirement even in these crazy times. I'm happy that she can be with her family, hopefully adding even more adorable grandchildren to her brood.
Congratulations and thank you, Debbie.
Last, certainly, but not may be the coolest photograph that I've had tonight of just Sam. Chris Tramber, Mr. Tramber is a musician himself, and he's introducing Rick Sadlin. And I quickly got acquainted to Rick when I was here because I was eager to see the quality that I heard so much about about the music program. And over a quarter century of work here, over twenty-five years, that quality of the program is trivial. I'm sure in no small part to Rick's leadership and always sad to leave, but you've blessed the program in wonderful shape. Congratulations to you, Rick. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I will say one of the many reasons I was excited to join the Darien community is because I was going to have the opportunity to work with Rick and Dr. Adley. I think just minutes after I signed the contract, let me know that Rick was retiring. So very sad to see Rick go. Rick was hired as the Director of the Darien Bands in nineteen ninety-four, and then he became the Director of Music in nineteen ninety-nine. Rick is an absolutely exceptional musician, having studied, conducted, and performed nationally and internationally. Prior to arriving in Darien, Rick taught music in summers and also has some years teaching private school. His reputation in the music education world, especially Connecticut, is well-established. As we're undergoing the process for finding Rick's replacement, I will even say, one of the candidates answered when asked, what will your biggest challenge be in the new position? The candidate responded, well, if you look up Director of Music in the dictionary, you will see a picture of Rick Sadlin. So I'm seeing, and that is a big challenge I'll face. During Rick's tenure, students have benefited a great deal with some programs that Rick really led, including the Darien Young Composer Concert, Holiday Spectrum Concert, the evolution and development of many new curricular ensembles, honors groups across all levels, summer jazz workshops, the addition of AP Music Theory into the Course of Studies, and an elementary ukulele program. Rick has consistently brought to the table a quiet wisdom, willingness to collaborate, and a true focus on what is best for students. Rick works with a sincere belief that he is leading the best music department in our state and probably the country. I can still remember the first time I met Rick when I was a very young music teacher, just starting out, and I was participating in the Connecticut Music Assessment Project. And Rick told me back then, this is over twenty years ago, I think, that he had the best job in the world. I know you will agree that Rick has made magic happen in our community, and he retires knowing he has made a difference through music. Congratulations to Rick.
Congratulations, Rick. Thanks for all your work on behalf of our kids. I think.
I believe that concludes our recognition ceremony.
All right. So thank you, everyone. Thank you for this unique graduation, recognition ceremony. We wish you all well, but thank you for your many years of service on behalf of the Darien Public School. We move on to the next agenda item, which was Dr. Adley's letter to the media regarding disparaging comments made on the cable news entertainment show.
Tara, I'm sorry. When this motion was made, I kind of missed what it was. I was scrambling to get a motion. So what exactly are we talking about right here? We're talking about the Fox move?
I had members asked to discuss the letter to the media that Dr. Adley put out regarding the comments that were made by Tucker Carlson disparaging DHS. And so I think that it's timely enough that it went out into the community, that it's valuable enough if members feel that they need to discuss.
Talking about Dr. Adley's letter.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I wasn't clear on that. That's why I voted no, because it came at me very quickly. Thanks.
Okay, sorry about that. So I will open it up to conversation. Mr., is that a hand, Mr. Seem?
Yeah, I just had a, given all the comments a number of us received, I just had one question or two questions for Dr. Adley. The letter was spectacular in addressing some of the issues we're all facing these days. But one of the sources was called in the question, not only by the news source, but when you, when you look at, you know, from a wide spectrum of news outlets and op-ed pages. So I guess the question that I had was, how do we source? When we do letters like this and we provide sources to families, children, parents, how do we source those organizations and how do we verify those sources are appropriate? And, you know, don't distract from the underlying message that we're trying to deliver to our community.
John, I have to say, sometimes it's in the eye of the beholder what a distraction is. For the Southern Poverty Law Center, the Teach and Tolerance Resource is one of the widely, most widely accepted pieces of, sorry, resource in the field of diversity, race, so on, so forth. It's supported by NASP, National Association of School Principals, NEA, FAPT, Human Rights Campaign, and it was the number one recommendation, not that this is the reason we did it, because honestly, I know about this organization, and I will say this, anything that goes out from principals ultimately is my responsibility and it was authorized here from my office. But not because of this, the Commissioner from State Department of Education, it was the number one recommendation of resource when they wrote to us. And actually, all the other resources that we give to parents to use, if you look through all those resources, they also acknowledge the work of, the work of that organization and the resources are found. And that's not to say that people within an organization don't make mistakes or they have had to calibrate themselves along the way. So that has, that has been the case, but they're far from a hate organization. I'm going to take exception to that, to be honest with you, from, from the media saying that that we're promoting that. So we would, to directly answer your question, administrators would vet essentially any resources that we distribute to families. We wouldn't send out resources that we didn't think were in keeping with the values of the school district.
Any board comments or questions? Mr. Burr.
Just since the topic came up, I read the letter when it came out. I saw the sources and the links. I didn't click on them, but and now having looked a little bit more closely, I still support the administration. I think you did a good job vetting the materials. And I think there are saints and sinners in almost any organization, probably including ours. So keep up the good work.
Yeah, I would just say, I think for all of us who have been on the board for, you know, recently or for a long time, it certainly is hard when nationally you're called out. I would say clearly information was not fact-checked. Certainly no one reached out to the Darien School System to understand those decisions. It was an administrative decision. As an individual member, I'm fully supportive of you guys being the educational professionals. I'm sorry, someone chose to disparage both our employees and tie it to cultism, which I don't think anyone here on the Board of Education or anyone I've seen in our school system. I believe, and we've seen tonight through some amazing students, we encourage students to learn and ask questions on their own to verify sources. When the resource came out, as a parent, I looked through it. Some of those resources are the United States versus Amistad Supreme Court majority ruling, the Underground Railroad. So I just would say that it is unfortunate that someone chose to go on national media and disparage the Darien School System. I am fully supportive of our school system and believe that if there's questions, we will bring them to the table. We'll have the public bring them to the table, but certainly I'm not relying on entertainment news to make our educational decisions for it.
I would say that, I would say that magnificent, we brought it up. I mean, it's an area of diversity equity that your students, our students want to talk about, that raise that through my entry-level plan. We have had issues of antisemitism here in the district. It's critical that we address the issue. Our young people are going out into the world, and we've got some of the finest, as any of us would say, like, they're not going to come out as leaders here. Where are they going to come out as leaders? And it's just critical that we have the opportunity. No, no one's going to force an agenda. Absolutely not. If there's any kids that are critical, can do critical thinking, and any teachers that can provide those structures, it's our teachers. But you have to talk about it in order for them to actually take a position and so on. As I said earlier, these kids were, if they'd been in school, they've been in structured situations where we could support them through such discussions. And that wasn't the case, and we simply shared some resources with our parents to navigate what is currently happening around the world.
Any other board comment? I would just say thank you to Dr. Adley for getting out such a well-composed letter quickly over a beautiful weekend. Ready to move on? Any other comments? Okay, we will move on to a report on the high school college acceptances and awards profile on our high school class of 2020 and post-high school plan. Mrs. Dunn and Mrs. Emanuelson.
I want to invite Megan. I've sent this, again, to the staff in this district, it's just phenomenal, and the guidance department is just outstanding, the work they do. And that's led obviously by Megan. I have to say though, that when I looked at what was done in the past for this presentation and I encouraged Megan still to go ahead with it, I know she would have wanted to do part two and part one of this together. But given COVID and given some of the schedule, the timing of things that has changed from the universities and colleges, there's just part one version, one of this is only be able to be presented tonight. But I thank Megan for going with the flow, and I'm happy to turn it over to her.
Thank you, Dr. Adley, and thank you as always for such kind feedback on the work of the counselors. I've been asked to share my screen, which I think will be the greatest challenge for me tonight, far more so than my presentation. So bear with me, and we will see how this goes. I think I might need some instruction here, Chris. All right.
Looks like you're almost there.
We're almost there, right? We're doing okay?
Yep, it's just behind your Zoom screen.
I've got to move all the beautiful people. Okay. I think I can do full screen. Beautiful. All right. And as I've probably said before at board presentations, I'm also not great at talking and clicking, and I'm being asked to do both. So bear with me. Good evening. I am Megan Emanuelson. I am the Director of Guidance for Grade Six through Twelve. Thank you so much for the opportunity to celebrate our amazing Class of 2020 and all of their hard work and post-high school plans. I would like to take a moment to express our appreciation for the ongoing support that the DHS Counseling Department receives from this board, as well as Central Services Administration, and of course, our Building Administration. I am incredibly proud of the daily work that our counselors do with students and have been particularly consumed with pride for the Herculean work that they have done during this very challenging time to stay connected to all of our kids, including our seniors, as they have navigated the decision portion of this process in ways like we've never had to before. As Dr. Adley mentioned, we are calling this Part One of our presentation because I would love to be able to provide the full board report that we have had in the past, hopefully early this fall. So this is the Resilient Class of 2020, three hundred and sixty-one students. They are artists and athletes and writers and poets, musicians, community servants, helpers, friends, and scholars. Their lifetimes to this point have been bookended by two of the most significant historical events on record. They were born as we were enduring the horrors of nine eleven, and they are graduating in a global pandemic. They have shown grace and maturity beyond their years and a resilience that we all strive to develop in our kids. They are sure to make history themselves as they share their countless gifts with the world. Their post-high school plans include a wide range of opportunities, and we can't wait to see what they're going to do next. We certainly want to be able to share an update on this class's post-high school plans because as with past years, they really are exceptional. But I want to be transparent that we are not able to present the full report on the outcomes that we typically do at this time. As we do not have complete data, I do want to give you a little bit of insight into the constraints that we're facing. There are some interesting trends that we're seeing in the admissions world, so I do want to share that with you. These are, as you'd imagine, a variety of COVID-related issues. So as part of COVID, colleges extended their response dates beyond the May first traditional deadline to June first or even later. So some of our students were still making final decisions, weighing options, or financial aid offers, or waiting to hear back from waitlists. In the past, we have administered the survey by paper pencil to collect the data around final plans as well as outcomes for each application. The survey is typically administered in advisory, so students have been a captive audience, so to speak. We are able to check it easily for completeness and in-person track down students. This year, we needed to move to collecting this data online via an ad dance, which of course has proven to be much more challenging as we're still awaiting responses from almost sixty students. Even when the surveys were submitted, we're finding that many of the students are not completing the survey completely in terms of the application outcome of each application. We have seen many colleges starting to reopen their application options. So students are now faced with opportunities and considerations and are giving pause to their final decisions. We recognize that in light of the global circumstances, family plans are changing. Students may now be considering gap year or state schools or staying closer to home. And as colleges develop their fall plans as to whether or not they'll be on campus or BE learning, this is also starting to impact student decisions. We have ongoing support. Most seniors had submitted applications and heard from colleges pre-closure. Students have continued to have access to their school counselors, who have done incredible work supporting students pre and post closure. They have remained connected to students and available to talk through decisions with students virtually. Anecdotally, as of now, we are not hearing of many students whose plans are changing due to COVID. But we recognize that may change over the summer, especially as colleges release what their fall plans are in terms of return to campus and E-learning. We anticipate sending final transcripts on the same timeline as we have in the past. Tonight, we would like to share with you some of the pre-closure data regarding the applications submitted by the Class of 2020. We can share overall application numbers as well as information on our early decision trends. I am cautious about sharing longitudinal data as we typically do, as it really is apples to oranges at this point without a complete data set. We can also share GPA and test scores reflecting seventh semester GPAs and test scores that are reflected through the closure and up until the cancellation of a lot of these tests. What we cannot share tonight are all the final outcomes and data and trends. We had about eighty-four point five percent of our students completing the survey, and as I mentioned, many of the surveys had incomplete data. Our department is actively reaching out to students and families who have not completed the survey or whose data is incomplete so that we can be sure to compile a full data set in the summer with the hopes of presenting our traditional report in the fall. So to share a little bit of the numbers with you, these are our average GPAs and test scores. As you can see, for the last four years, this is a slightly bigger class of three hundred and sixty-one, but our GPA and our test scores remain strong and consistent over time. This is the summary information, and again, just to talk you through the numbers a little bit. And again, just to talk you through the numbers a little bit, we've had about 305 out of 361 responses. So that 83.4% reflects the total, the, the percentage of the total number of the class that report that they'll be attending a four-year college. So as you can see, the percentage of our students attending four-year schools has remained relatively constant over time. And we do anticipate that this number will be more aligned with previous years once we have complete data. In looking at the overall number of applications our office submitted, just over 3,500 applications to nearly 400 different schools. 96.4% of the class submitted an application to at least one, two or four-year school. And that number is consistent with the application rate that we've seen in the past year. That reflects 348 students applying to school. These are early decision numbers. Just about half of our seniors submitted an early decision application, either in an ED1 or an ED2 round. We are still waiting on more decisions to come, but we're presently at about a 65% acceptance rate. Students, about 65% of our students who submitted ED apps were accepted through an ED pool, which is really wonderful. We had 203 total early decision apps, which reflects the early decision to applications as well. And again, we are still waiting on a number of decisions that's really reflective of the waitlists. These are the schools where we sent the most applications this year. This is very, this list is very, very similar to past years. Many of the same schools were on the list last year. So on the left, you see the current year and then on the right, longitudinal data for 2017 to 2020. This is sort of a working list, as again, we're still waiting on the data. So as of right now, these are the schools that the students have reported they are attending. So the, the most attended with the data that we do have. As of now, our students are saying that they're going to attend 130 different institutions. And again, we anticipate these numbers will change as we get more data. Very similar to, if you looked at last year, a lot of these same schools are on the same list. This slide outlines our state school applications. While it may look like the overall percentage of the class applying to state schools has decreased, this is a larger class than the past several years. And as you can see, the total number of apps this year at 121 is similar to last year at 129 and higher than the previous two years. And finally, we had 179 applications to Ivy League schools from 77 different students. Many of these decisions have not been reported. There are quite a number still on the waitlist and we're still waiting for those decisions. Thus far, we have 14 students that say that they will be attending an Ivy League school. I anticipate that once we have complete data, it will look very similar to previous years. And I am happy to take any board questions and look forward to sharing the complete report with you in the fall.
Thank you, Ms. Emanuelson. Board questions? I can't see you all yet.
Tara.
Yeah. Deb, go, because I can't see you yet.
Hi Megan, thank you so much for that information.
Hi Deb.
I know it's incomplete and I look forward, I love that, that information when we get it every year. And what we do as well. I have is, are we seeing, I'm guessing we're seeing a lot of delays in terms of hearing back from waitlist applications? And is that sort of, and then my daughter's getting a lot of emails where people are asking for applications still. So it seems like this process is much more extended than it typically is. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I think the waitlist situation is extended largely because many of those response dates were extended. So the schools don't really know at this point how many seats they have available to offer to their waitlists. And so we are seeing that. And, and as you're seeing as a mom, schools are reaching out and actively recruiting kids. I have a senior who's been, you know, committed for a long time and she gets 10 to 12 emails a day saying that somebody would still take her application. So we are seeing this change pretty significantly this year in terms of the extension of the time.
Other board questions? So I mean, just an observation first, such great work and our students are so prepared for their next steps, even in this kind of crazy time. I think the data you can provide us is really impressive for the steps that they're taking. Can you talk a little bit, are you seeing anything as a guidance department in terms of additional outreach or need for these seniors who are, who are, you know, typically at this point enjoying college free days in the beginning of summer? For the guidance department, is there any change in kind of your interactions at this point?
So the, the counselors are reporting, it has been fairly typical in terms of what they would, what they've seen in past years with student questions and concerns. Certainly, we anticipated with students not being able to in the spring do those final visits, which are so important, or those accepted student days, which are often such a critical part to them making a final decision, we were really concerned about that. So as many of you know, we set up Zoom calls with our alumni and that was taken advantage of by a large portion of the class. I think we had almost 100 alums step up to, to Zoom with our students. And I, the feedback that I received from students and parents just was that that really helped them to get a student perspective from a, from a student that they felt was from, you know, their community and had a similar background and similar experiences. And, and so that was one thing that we did anticipate and we were really proud of the programming that we were able to put together to, to help the kids to just get some of those last minute questions answered about the campuses that they were considered, considering. But in general, I think the counselors again have been Zooming and phone calling and just making themselves as, as available in person, virtually as they can to help navigate those decisions. And they report that, that what they've seen is, besides the virtual environment, has been fairly typical.
Great, thanks. And thanks to all those alumni who stepped up.
Absolutely, it was spectacular. Some of your children, so thank you.
Yeah.
Tara, it's, it's hard to.
I see Mr. Seany's hand.
Sorry Jill, go ahead.
Sorry, it's hard to see my hand on here.
Megan, could you maybe take down the screen sharing? Because then we'll all pop up.
I will try, Tara.
Megan, there's a red button probably at the top of the screen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go first.
Go ahead.
Megan, thank you for creating a pretty concise version, so we can just get a slice at this point in time. I, I imagine you've maybe already thinking about this, but when you come back to us to talk to us about what the final results look like. I just would love, just so I'm on the record, I would love to know how many of our kids are getting into engineering schools that wanted to, into art schools that wanted to, and some of the other, what, what percentage are going to liberal arts versus maybe other structures? Just a little more information about the kind of paths that we have put our students on beyond just the college name. Thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Great, Dr. Adley, you have a question?
Just a quick, quick, Megan, sort of off topic, just a slight bit, but it probably didn't impact as much of our seniors as perhaps our juniors. Have you heard back from colleges seeking clarification on the grading system we use or any of that?
So they have said that they will ask for, for some level of description and we're having, you know, obviously the schools did lots of different things. So we're having conversations about what that should look like. I think they have, colleges widely have said that whatever it is that a school has done, it won't, it won't hold a student back. I think we will be proudly sharing the work that Darien has done because I think just in, in my conversation, in my own town, in my conversations with lots of people elsewhere, I think we have done an extraordinary job of, of live teaching and of connecting to our kids. And so we'll want to express that. So as you know, our transcripts will look as they have in the past with letter grades for semesters. So they have said that they'll want to just have a snapshot of what we did, but I think we can hold our heads proud. I think we've done an extraordinary job on behalf of our kids. And they've responded in, in amazing ways. What our children have done in terms of actively engaging in their learning, I feel, I feel great about the, the decisions that we've made around their transcripts.
Thank you, Megan. Great. Other board comments or questions? Mr. Seany.
Just really quickly, Megan, just on Jill's question, is it, do you have data that shows announced majors where available? I know a lot of schools you don't have to announce, but I was just wondering if it gets that granular.
I believe we did have that as a question on our survey this year. So.
What was the question, Mr. Finnegan?
Information on majors.
Yeah, where, where available. I know some schools don't make you, you know, announce a major, but.
And as you know, they're 18, so.
Yeah, well.
I, I started as a chemistry pre-med major, let me see how that worked out.
That was accounting, I think Megan.
Any other board comments or questions? All right, we look, we look forward to this because it just helps us understand all the great things our students are headed up to do. Thank you for what we have so far. We'll look forward to part two, but mostly we wish all the students the best of luck as they're sorting all this out. Just another factor in kind of this crazy time, but we are very proud of all they've done and how they've been prepared to get here so far. So thank you.
We are as well. Thank you all for your support.
With that, we will move on to the report on the DAED, Barbara Harrington Fund Awards. Mr. Tranberg.
Sorry, my mouse wasn't moving. Good evening again, everyone. It's my pleasure to present to you the recipients of the Barbara Harrington Fund Award. As you know, the Barbara Harrington Fund was established in 1984 by the Darien Advocates for Education of the Gifted in honor of Barbara Harrington, who is the founder of the IDEA program for our gifted students. I will say that, I will say at least once a day, I get to learn about a new community treasure. And the day that I learned about this, I thought that this was a great treasure that we have, a way to, to celebrate and recognize faculty and in some exceptional ways. So this year, we have four successful applicants, John Garrity, Jane Minnis, Austin Skelso and Dylan Spielfogle. There's a description in the packet of what each of them is doing, but I think it's worth mentioning that these are teachers who are truly going to be learning in a way that they have to teach, because they're all participating in online learning experiences in order to do this. Austin has already sent me a message, his program started, it's a seven-week program. And he's already asked to provide some PD to the faculty when we start about what, what he's learning. And that's one of the big objectives of this program is to look at some innovative specialized ways of teaching and thinking and to bring it back to the staff. So it's great to see that's in place already.
Great, thank you. Are there any board, board questions? We certainly thank the Barbara Harrington Fund and DAED for all they have done to help support our teachers and we are really special and lucky, of which we need to have this as an asset. So thank you and we wish our teachers best of luck with E-learning. We will move on to the update on district enrollment. Mr. Rudel.
So it's the enrollment for early June, it's been relatively stable. Kindergarten is up 12 enrollments. The big item there is Oxbridge did trigger the fourth section, which is budgeted. First grade is relatively the same, three over projection with one extra section at Hindley. Second grade is relatively stable as well at two over projection, no changes to sections. Third grade is two over projection with one increased section at Token Creek. Fourth grade is seven over, but no changes in budgeted sections. And then fifth grade is seven over as well, but a reduction at Hindley. So grades one through five are still a plus one. Middlesex is essentially at projected enrollment, only two off. And then the high school is plus 13. Overall, we are 10 students off of projected enrollment.
Board comments or questions?
Rich, I, I think I understand, but I just, would you clarify? When you say we triggered the fourth section, what you mean is we are currently now three kindergarten sections under budget. We need to fill the fourth section, correct?
So Oxbridge was budgeted for four. In May, they had only needed three, based on the June enrollment, they're up to four now.
Thank you.
Any other board questions? I, I can't see everybody, so if Katie or Deb, who I can't see, have something? Okay, hearing none. We'll keep an eye on those sections, they may help inform us as we go forward. An update on plans for reopening schools in the fall, Dr. Adley.
So as I mentioned in my announcements, the closing reopening task force sort of like was closed out. And we have now started the process of aggressively looking at what the, what the fall actually looks like. There are 50 participants from administration and teachers who are on that committee. Members of the cabinet have actually participated in two out of four. And we will do all four of the reopenings for workshop that facilitated at Connecticut Center for School Change. That, that involves 60, 70 school districts across the state of Connecticut. So that's helpful to us in framing the discussion. The reopening, the district reopening school task force is focused on a number of areas. They include operations, teaching and learning, special education, health and wellness and communication. So essentially by the end of this month, we will have in place a framework for what the start of the year actually looks like. That won't be, it won't be completely done because we have to map out what, what is a full-fledged social emotional wellness plan look like for the year, given what's going on. That will be completely done, but, but how it looks, how it feels, the main structures that will be in place. Parents and the community, the teachers will be receiving the survey by the end of this week as to any learners that we can take away from what has been happening. I'm also very curious as to what are the stories for the children for which it didn't work for? I mean, there's a lot of students that did work for, I'm very curious as to how do we color that picture in terms of, of learning from that, in terms of, for students that just didn't work for? Regarding communication, at the next meeting, I'll also update the board again. I shared with the, the community that we'll make a communication on June 12th and June 26th to parents, so that they're not wondering, where are we with this? What's the latest update? We'll provide them with that. The latest that I can give to the group actually, when we come back this week, we have a meeting again on Friday. The Connecticut State Guidelines, currently what I'm hearing is that they're likely to come out with, everyone has to do something as opposed to, a lot of people are waiting because do we do hybrids? Do we do half-stays? Do we do different things? It looks like the reopening task force and the State Department of Education is actually going to tell us what to do, what format to do. So it later be, at this point, all E-learning, all back to school. Personally, personally, I'd love to be back to school, everybody back to school. That's my take on it. Obviously don't want to be, put anybody's health and safety at risk, so I certainly wouldn't do that. And what they're looking at at the moment and considering advocating across the state is a sort of like four by, as a, as a sort of a four by one, which is really the opportunity of elementary kids going to school four days and some of the secondary one day. That might change, but that's kind of what we're hearing at the moment. We will not receive complete guidelines for at least a couple of weeks, which is unfortunate. That changes, we'll let you know too, but at this point, we're waiting to hear those guidelines. But certainly by the end of the month, we will have a framework of what, what it looks like and sounds like to go back to school here in Darien for our students.
Board comments, questions? Mrs. Ritchie.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Unfortunately, there's so much uncertainty still surrounded with this. But I'm wondering, you mentioned a two-day secondary week. What exactly does that mean? Are you saying that some students will go, is it all students two days? They're going to rotate students and do alternating days? What does that exactly look like?
Actually, Mrs. Ritchie, I actually said four days for the elementary and one day for the secondary currently. And they're not quite sure what the cutoff is for middle school. But again, I'm probably overreaching here a wee bit because they get, they, they could change this. But I don't know the details of it and I'll honestly as to what that would look like because it's going to take us probably twice the space to accommodate our, our young people at the elementary levels, at any level. So I'd like to see a few more details about what that actually, thinking around it before.
But it, it sounds like what you're hearing is the state will come down with a plan that we should adhere to or we will be told to adhere to.
And I would, would like, if any parents are looking at, looking in, some parents will be and said that, I can't imagine that you're, you know, you're considering anything different. We may not have a choice. In some cases here, we've been given a directive. So it looks like that they're going to be assertive about it and perhaps not like graduation where, well, work it out if you can. and keep people hanging along. It seems like they're going to come out with a specific model that we, that all schools across Connecticut are going to have to do. It might look different in some schools, but.
So that's news. I think, I'm sorry, Mr. Seedy.
Just to follow up on that, Dr. Adley, when you say required to do it, you think it's going to be an executive order down from the governor that would force kind of us to adhere to those standards?
Either right from the State Department of Education or through a governor's executive order?
Yeah, it could be either way. It could be a mandate from the State Department of Education. Just to be clear, I don't know that it wouldn't necessarily come from the executive order, but it could. There might be a lot of ways to throw down a mandate. So I just want to be clear, that's what we're hearing now. I don't want any parents to walk away thinking that we have a plan. My understanding is the reopening committee will continue. We'll try to come up with the best plan for Darien. And we'll look to what the state says, and as always, we will advocate on behalf of our students and our community. Mrs. McCann.
Alan, can you speak at all to any of the reopening, what the reopening committee is looking at in terms of special education? And I'm thinking of it from two different perspectives, maybe some of the just maybe services that can be delivered remotely and services that we struggle to deliver remotely.
So certainly, we certainly would be looking at ways that we increase the opportunities to deliver services where we possibly can. And trying to meet the health and safety requirements. I mean, they're pretty significant, but the group is going to be trying to put together the best plan it can to accommodate special education needs. I can't see those, if we're open enough, we're going to be open enough for all children. So it's going to apply for all children. Shirley's on that task force or on that section. I don't know if you want to report anything out there, Shirley, from the group. Can you hear me?
Thank you. Yes, I can. Thank you. Jill, just the best way to answer that is, of course, looking at practices with both children's learning differences and general ed. But we're going to look at the same fields of how we can reopen it safely, looking at social distancing, looking at transportation, looking at P P Es, looking at staffing, and finding what would be the easiest reentry and what can we look at? So we're really at the beginning of looking at how we can do that, but those are the fields that we're looking at.
I think we also learned along the way in special education, things like the use of our tremendous power professionals and how to do some of those things. And some of the pushing of some of the services and interventions for students. And we'll continue to push on those issues.
Mr. Denne.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Any conversation come up around transportation and busing? I guess my concern would be the availability of buses if we go to having to only have limited capacity on buses.
Yeah, that could well, Mr. Denne, that could well be the kicker here because depending on which plans are put in place, some of them will be possible, just if we have to split half-days or do things like that, they're not going to be possible given the busing requirements. Even the availability of buses, even if you could do it, even getting the buses is going to be inevitably impossible. So I think that that is going to be one of the biggest constraints that any district is facing in terms of how it informs the program that we actually implement. And supercouncils around the state are talking to the State Department of Education about transportation. Now, listen. There are reassurances that are coming down in a conference call from the commissioner about, we won't ask you to do anything that we're not going to pay for, but honestly, I believe that one, see it. I've yet to see that, to be honest with you. One way or the other, that'll get passed on. But transportation, it's just, it's going to be a huge problem if they don't relax some of the distance and requirements and so on, which is, right now, I wouldn't say that they would relax some of those.
Any other board comments or questions? Okay, so we will keep you updated. I can tell you, board chairs around the state are asking all the same questions we are and hearing all the same things, just possibility of buses, how to do this. So any new information I get will go directly after you, and we'll look forward for updates administratively. We will move on to further discussion and possible action on the revisions to the fiscal year 2021 budget to meet the reduction approved by the Board of Finance and the R T M. First, I'd like you to say thank you to the R T M last night. Our work with R T M Education and R T M F and B, I think, was well received. I appreciated their comments in support of our budget and where it is at this point. I think Clarissa Torrey and Jack Davis represented their committee as well, and I just thank you them for their continued open dialogue both in this process and going forward. It was a long meeting last night, and I know some of you were on that call with me. So two long nights in a row, certainly a shout of care and concern for our community and our residents. And with that, we will engage, I think everyone has information before them. I will ask you some of this, should we move on to motions and decisions tonight? Please bear with Mrs. Ritchie and I, we need to do this in tandem, and usually we can sit next to each other and make sure we're in tandem. So just bear with us as we go through and if we need to pause for a moment. With that, Dr. Adley, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you for board members' comments along the way on the budget and for your thoughts entering tonight. Thank you to Richard for his work and the cabinet for their insights and advice. So what we tried to do was take into consideration some of the concerns that we had the last time from the board that we were sitting here. We've tried to address some of those questions or issues so that they are delineated one through, I think it's 38 or so, in this memorandum. We tried to summarize, so what have you done differently? Well, some people asked us about it if we were doing travel or be saving because things aren't going to be happening. So we looked at some of those, and where we could, we realized some savings. They're not huge in many cases, but we tried to do that. There will be an adjustment of close to $10,000, and I think we can do a contract salary adjustment that would just, we've just learned we could actually do that, so maybe another $10,000 that we could contribute here. But big changes is really from last time. You're asking, why did you up the pre-purchase? Because A, I'm trying to read the board, but I'm also trying to position where this is not going to impact programs. We also were discussing things like pre-purchase in the books, so we put those in there. And so that increased the pre-purchase budget control was not something I think we touched the last time. So I touched two items in the budget control. So that's a judgment call and a risk factor. Again, budget control is, I certainly don't want to comment on the history here. It may be a cherished opportunity to address class sizes and so on. It's not one that's widely across the state, I'll just be honest with that. So perhaps an area we'll look at, we've got a slight increase in the turnover. And then I just sort of summarized in that small chart how we might meet the reductions that we need to make. Thank you. We did use John's version of the table, just the interactive nature, which is helpful because we'll use that tonight anyway. The most latest worksheet that we sent, that's actually on the screen right now. So we've tried to categorize these and prioritize them, or it might be easier reading for people. If you're using the last one, it's somewhat the same, it's just organized just a slightly different way. And we did a slight alteration or revision on the priorities and moved one or two things around.
So I will say there were some members of the public that somehow had this spreadsheet that had an error in it. If anyone is following along, they should not be using that. This is, this one is corrected.
Mr. Rudel will, as we go tonight, if that's what we're using, Mr. Rudel will populate the decision making and be able to see where we are in real time.
Yeah. Board comments or questions? Mr. Seedy.
One of my suggestions would be to kind of pick off some of the easier things, I think, that weren't disputed early on and kind of see where we can get you know, to at least start this process this evening.
Okay, any other board comments or questions? With the screen sharing, I only see so many of you, so if you raise your hand and I'm not calling on you, feel free to speak.
Tara, just, it's Deb, for my benefit, because I have right now 52 motions for these items. I'm going to please beg people to go slowly and try as best you can to stay in the order that it was presented today by Dr. Adley and Rich. It will make this go faster and smoother and more efficiently for all of us. Thank you.
Okay. Deb, I want to make sure I have it listed the same way as you, so do you want to start with the reduction with what we have listed here as category A? Or do you have pre-buys first?
No, I have, I structured it as it's presented on the screen. So the first, the first item I have is, it's the refuse collection reduction, so that's the order I have it in.
We'll treat it again like cut night. We'll go down the list. I'm going to make a motion. Second, we'll open the motion for discussion. We will have discussion. If everyone is ready to vote on that, we will. And if not, we'll let that discussion guide us. So.
Tara?
Mr. Denne.
Yeah, just Deb, a little clarity on the 52 motions. And I think to the point earlier of if, and I appreciate all the work that Rich and Dr. Adley did. But if you look at category A, I think those are the ones we've talked about. They are the kind of easy efficiency type ones. Is that the methodology you have set up, Deb, to go through those quickly? Or do you have, do you have category A in one motion or each of those items a motion?
No, Duke, we can't do that because they're all different account numbers. So in my opinion, we have to reduce them by R C and by account and by dollar number. So I have it set up that each one of those items is a separate motion because we're reducing a different account, a different R C and a different item. So if I'm doing it wrong, please let me know.
No, but you're going to, you're going to go through line, you're going to go through category A to start the first nine.
I have it structured exactly as it's presented on the screen right now.
Yeah, so we need to go through, and for reduction in the budget, since we have line item control, Deb is correct, we need to reduce each line one by one. So with that, may I have a motion, R C 12, account 62001, refuse collection to open that item for a change of $29,242,000. We have a motion.
I move. Katie.
Moves, may I have a second, Mr. Denne. Okay, any discussion on this item? Is everyone ready to vote? Okay, I'm going to have to see everybody, I think. Okay. Deb, you're muted.
Sorry, I can't see anybody, so I don't know how you want to go about the vote.
Tara, I would take these first nine as no negatives.
No, we have to vote individually, Dennis. They're all different account numbers, so I mean, we could go through it rapidly, but they have to be voted on separately.
No one is an objection, we can just approve unanimously. And if someone votes no, then it's a no.
All right. I got that end of it. I have that from months of Zoom, so just hang on one second so we can see everybody. I think what it is, we have other people in the meeting.
Mr. Tranberg, can you get the board just back as a group?
I'm not the one sharing my screen.
Whoever's sharing their screen.
It might be Rich.
Rich, we're going to have to take that shared screen down.
So Tara, just to be clear, we're going to ask for the noes first on these.
Yeah, for the noes first and the objections, and assuming there's none of those, I will assume it's a unanimous vote unless someone has something to say. So are there any noes to a change of $29,242,000 in account 62001? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to reduce account 123021, technology equipment for $28,125, Chromebook RFP pricing a change to $300 versus $325. Mr. Denne, so moves. Mr. Burke, second. Are there any objections to this motion? Are there any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. Account number 52002, industry transportation, a change, a negative change of $34,701 due to a renegotiated contract with first student. May I have a motion? Mrs. Stein, so moves. Mr. Denne, second. Are there any objections? Are there any abstentions? With that, the motion carries unanimously. A change to account 52001, regular people transportation, bear with me for a second, an addition of $88,452,000 in active funds for the fifth Renshaw Road area. Are there any objections to this motion? Are there any abstentions?
No, no, Tara, I don't think anybody made the motion or seconded it.
Sorry, may, I have a first, Mrs. Stein, and a second, Mr. Burke. Thank you. Are there any objections to this motion? Are there any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. A change to account number 52001, regular people transportation, reduction of $86,859 for renegotiated first contract student. May I have a motion? Mr. Maroney, a second. Mr. Brown, are there any objections to this motion? Are there any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. A change to account 63001, fuel oil, a reduction in this account of $30,200 for a renegotiated heating price point of 1.798. May I have a motion? Mr. Burke, a second. Mr. Maroney, are there any objections to this motion? Are there any abstentions? With that, the motion carries unanimously. A change to account 52001, regular people transportation, a reduction of $8,200 of a renegotiated diesel price point of 1.798. May I have a motion? Mr. Brown, and a second, Mr. Denne. Are there any objections? Are there any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. Reduction in the account of 82006, student accident assurance of $19,766. That's a COVID-19 renewal credit. May I have a motion? Mrs. Stein, and a second, Mr. Denne. Are there any objections to this motion? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. Deb, we still together?
Yes, we're good. Thanks.
A change to account 64003, telephone, a reduction of $7,800 for the telephone audit. May I have a motion? Mr. Burke, a second. Mr. Maroney, are there any objections to this motion? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. A reduction to account 13035, software maintenance, a reduction of $40,000 for the web filter, which will now be provided by the state of Connecticut. May I have a motion? Mrs. Stein, a second. Mr. Burke, any conversation? Any objections? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. Account number 82002, health insurance, a reduction of $13,568. It's a non-certified E R I P. May I have a motion? Mr. Burke, a second. Mr. Brown, any conversation? Any objections? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Rudel, keep me honest, in various accounts, the elementary allocation of resources. Rich, you can code this. Rich, you can code this correctly, but it's RC 5, 7, 8, 9, and 10. It is a reduction.
Tara, I'm sorry, Tara, I just, in, in the motion, I just, I referred to the separate chart that Rich provided us, which shows the allocations. Is that, is that a good thing to do, Rich?
Yep, that's how we would allocate it.
Okay, thank you.
So it is a reduction to those accounts of $23,439. It's an adjustment to the allocation of resources based upon updated enrollment. May I have a motion? Mrs. Stein, a second. Mr. Burke, any conversation? Any objections? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. So Rich, if you, Deb, and I are in sync, that is a reduction to the budget of $233,448, correct?
That's correct.
So Rich, just to clarify, we stand out right now, so we still have a shortfall of $791,708, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to what we are calling category B. These are all deferrals. I will take us through category B. We will take category B in much the same way. So account number 52002, in district special education transportation, a reduction of $115,833, ESY buses eliminated due to virtual ESY. May I have a motion? Mrs. Stein, a second. Mr. Maroney, any discussion? Okay, any objections? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. A reduction to account 25003, professional development of $12,000. It is a whole, to hold professional development flat in that category. May I have a motion? Mr. Seeny, a second. Mr. Brown, any conversation? Any objection? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. Account number 73010, maintenance and equipment, a reduction to that account of $19,790 to defer maintenance equipment. May I have a motion? Mrs. Stein, a second. Mr. Dineen, any conversation? Any objections? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. Account number 052004, field trips. A reduction of $3,750, a reduction to field trips based on an uncertain school year. May I have a motion?
Tara, I'd like to make a motion to amend this.
Okay. You can make, wait, let me get my Robert's Rules of Order right.
Sorry.
John, let's open the motion and have conversation, and then, so Mr. Seeny opens the motion. May I have a second? Mr. Burke, okay, now open the conversation. Mr. Seeny.
I'd just like to increase it, to make a motion to increase it to 7,500, given what we just talked about related to the school year, upcoming school year. It's unlikely we're gonna have any field trips.
Okay.
So just, I'm sorry, just to be clear, your motion, Mr. Seeny, is to amend the reduction to increase it to a total of 7,500, which would be a full reduction to the field trips, correct?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Mr. Maroney, any conversation? Mr. Dineen?
I would just like to hear any comments from the administration on that with respect to them understanding what's going on next year.
Well, certainly, certainly, again, depending on the restrictions, we try to, to, you know, predict a little bit that we're not gonna, it's not gonna be business as usual, but doesn't prevent something happening and some shorter trips potentially, but, you know, I don't have a crystal ball with it, it depends how it sort of works out, but it doesn't give you any flexibility, we don't have anything, so.
So my, my thought, and I need the administration's opinion on this, is that I look at field trips as enrichment, and should we have something, and again, to the public, I'm not saying this is happening, but what Dr. Adley described, like four to one, might we be looking for some virtual field or some flexibility for those kids who are not in school to have some sort of enriching activity? I don't know how other board members of the administration feels about that.
Well, well, we cut it in half, so that tells you that we made that judgment, but I prefer not to take the whole thing. I don't really have a reason to take the whole thing, other than to say nothing's gonna happen. I don't know if nothing's going to happen.
Okay, any thoughts?
Alan, I understood the CDC guidelines to be that field trips would not be allowed and that people would not be in the building. That doesn't preclude us from doing it, what Tara's describing, which is virtual field trips. But can you comment on that understanding?
With a fault?
That was, well, when the CDC released their guidelines, that's where I thought that was listed.
Well, State Department of Education have our issue there. At the minute, I don't have guidelines saying that in the fall for, when we reopen, that we can't do any trips, because we're gonna be bringing kids in buses. If we're coming to school, chances are we're transporting the children. If that's the case, I don't know that they would put a restriction that you can't do anything. Maybe you can't go out of state, or maybe something like that, but certainly the restrictions, there are restrictions in that regard, but what they will be when we reopen school from the reopened campus, I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Ritchie, did I see your hand?
You did. I'm gonna be an optimist and hope that at some point all guidelines are gonna change and that our children can actually have some of these enriching experiences. So I oppose a further cut to this one.
I think some of these field trips, too, are the ones that are like the Darian Historical Society and things like that. I'd like to think that Darian might be able to find a way to get even if elementary kids out of school and enjoying some of the findings that Darian has to offer. Any other thoughts? Okay, so there is a motion on the table to reduce account 052004 to a reduction of $7,500. All those in favor of that motion? Mr. Seeny? Mr. Maroney? All those opposed? Mr. Burke, Mr. Dineen, Mrs. McCannan, Mr. Brown, Mrs. Stein, and myself. That motion fails. There is an additional motion on the table for reduction to the budget of $3,750. All those in favor? Mrs. Stein, Mr. Maroney, Mr. Dineen, Mr. Burke, Mr. Seeny, Mrs. Ritchie, Mrs. Brown, and myself. That motion passes unanimously. Okay. Account number 025013, temporary hourly help. That is a reduction of $3,000 to remove funding for a guest composer due to an uncertain school year. It was new this year. May I have a motion? Mrs. Stein, Mr. Burke, seconds. Any conversation? Seeing no conversation, is there anyone opposed to this cut? Is there anyone abstaining? I will assume then the motion carries unanimously. If anyone gets confused how they're voting, let me know, I'm trying to do this sufficiently. Account number 13015, local travel, a reduction of $250, a reduction to travel for the recruitment fares that will be virtual. May I have a motion? Mrs. Stein, Mr. Brown, seconds. Any conversation? Seeing no conversation, are there any objections to this? Are there any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously. We have a deferral, again, in account 13015, local travel, a reduction of $2,500, reduction to travel due to an uncertain school year. May I have a motion? Mr. Burke? Mrs. McCannan, are you making a motion? Okay, Mr. Brown, then, as a second. Any conversation? Mr. Dineen? Mr. Dineen, did you have conversation on that?
Sorry, I hit the wrong button. Just, Dr. Adley and Rich, just a little further detail on what encompasses that $10,000 in terms of local travel?
Typically, that would be people within state, for the most part. Richard, is there anything else in there?
It also is travel reimbursement for itinerant staff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so are there any objections to this motion? Any abstentions? With that, this motion carries unanimously. Account number 13015, local travel, a reduction of $250, a reduction in travel due to anticipated cancellation of conferences. May I have a motion? Mr. Burke, a second. Mr. Seeny, is that a second? Is there any conversation? Any objections? Any abstentions? That motion carries unanimously. This is a deferral of account 023001, sessions. $7,425, deferring 50% of the secondary level update to aging books. May I have a motion? Mr. Burke, may I have a second. Mrs. McCannan. Any conversation?
Just.
Seeny.
Go ahead, Mr. Burke.
I just wanted some detail of what exactly this is.
So it's just, it's just a portion of the replenishing of the libraries with updating the books.
Mrs. Ritchie.
So in other words, we're not updating the libraries, then is this a deferral? So it will be something that we will see back in the budget?
Well, a lot of these, actually, Deb, are deferrals that, you know, from the ESY buses and so on and so forth. Any hole that we sort of, sort of dig in that regard will be harder to make up, you know, in the previous year. So a lot of these are in that regard.
Mr. Seeny?
Yeah, I was just gonna make a motion to increase this deferral.
Okay, so what number would you put to it?
25,000.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'm sorry, he's increasing it to 25,000, is that correct?
Mr. Seeny is making a reduction to account 023001, books that are aging at secondary level of $25,000. Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Maroney, any conversation?
Well, just to be clear, that, I just want to ensure that that's not just, is it all secondary level, that account, or can you just describe what the account is, Rich?
Oh, it's, it's library books district wide. The replacement of aging text, though, is really just the $14,850, so the recommendation was half of that. There's also hope, these, like, library software, that's the library and other books within that as well.
Yeah, so, so just to be clear, that 25,000 will be across all account, not just for that one item that's been outlined by administration.
Okay, so Mr. Seeny's cut is for $25,000 to books across the district.
So I'm sorry, that's, it's to account 023001, is that correct, Rich?
Yes, they're all, all the library books district wide, and then again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Maroney, second to that, and Mr. Dineen, have a comment?
Just, I'd like to understand, from the administration, what impact that cut would have by increasing that?
I'll probably sound like a broken record. I'm just not in favor of significantly reducing the base of some of these things. Once you start doing that, you're chipping away at the quality of the program that's in place. I know you may say, well, they can do without the books, well. I mean, I just respectfully disagree. Once you start, we've already done this, we've written through this, and we went through it again, and tried to come up with some reasonable concisions, but once you start to talk about the basic supplies, books, processes, I mean, it's just, I'm just fundamentally against that principle. So I'll probably sound, sound like that repetitive tonight, some of these things. I just don't want to reduce the basis more than we have to.
Are these also some of the texts that'll now, should we go to a modified schedule, we'll be living at home with kids and then coming back to us?
I'd like, I honestly not sure. I'm honestly not sure.
Any other comments? Mrs. McCannan?
You may have just asked a question, but I'm, I'm not clear on Alan, exactly, or Rich, exactly what this additional cut would impact. And I am curious to know what preliminary conversation has been had about the use of shared materials. Again, I understand that there will be, there may be some limitations on shared materials. And so while I certainly appreciate the point of not decimating our libraries, that would not be the goal. I'm just, would like to understand better and would like to understand what conversations been had about shared materials.
So I wouldn't use the word decimate the library, because I don't think, I don't think we are in that regard. I just don't want to plead the operational side of it. When you say, when you say build shared services, what do you, what do you, what do you mean by that?
Shared materials, so by definition, you know, a library book that comes in from one student and then gets passed to the next. I know, for example, our public library is changing some of the structure of how they check books in and out to help manage the spread of COVID, so I'm assuming we will, we may need to make some adjustments to how we handle materials that pass from student hand to student hand. And I just don't know what, why the administration.
That type of thing is, right, those are type of things that are being talked on to the operational arm of the return to school.
So, but, and I'm sorry, because I don't have my budget book in front of me right now, but are these all library books, or these are books across the district? And a cut of 25,000, I know you might not know which ones, because you weren't anticipating that, but my understanding is these are not all library books.
Richard, is there some that are the departments?
So it's, it's like fiction books, it's updating, like, graphic novels in the library, philosophy books to improve the collection, updating aging materials. There is a hosting fee for some software that's used at the library. It's updating elementary collections to be in line with teachers' college. There's an annual subscription to, like, the World Almanac ebook. There's money in general just for ebooks to the audiobooks as well that come from the library. It's really those kind of items across the seven schools.
So my only concern, or something for the board to think about, is we just cut the elementary allocation of resources. Now, that's across, that, that 23,000 is across the elementary schools, so we're really something to consider as we cut in there for the kids, the basics. Mr. Burke?
I, you know, I respect Mr. Seeny's proposition. It's not an outrageous sum when you just look at it, but hearing from the superintendent, I think I would defer to his, you know, his judgment, and I would be supportive of keeping the cut. And it is a cut, as is.
Okay, so there is a motion on the table to cut $25,000 from account 023001. Are there, all in favor? Mr. Seeny? Mr. Brown? All opposed? Mr. Maroney, Mrs. Stein, Mrs. McCannan, Mrs. Ritchie, Mr. Burke, and Mr. Dineen, if I didn't say his name, and myself. That motion fails. There is another motion on the table for a reduction in this count of $7,425. All in, is there anyone opposed to that motion? No one is opposed to that mission, is there anyone abstaining? With that, I will assume that it is unanimous in favor of. We will move on to account 25002, professionally library purchase. A reduction in that account of the whole account of $500. The account has only been used once in the past three years. Is there a motion? I'm gonna open up this motion, please. Mrs. Stein, in a second. Mr. Burke? Is there any conversation?
What is it? I just would love to know.
January speaking, you've got subscriptions to professional magazines or otherwise for professional staff, basically. Basically.
Any other conversation? Okay, is there any objection to this reduction? Is there any abstentions to this reduction? With that, that motion carries unanimously. Okay, so. Deb?
Yes.
Where I think we're gonna start to see some conversation. And for the board, some of these are being recommended for pre-buy. So we are gonna have to take up that issue as we do this. Because I need to know whether it's in a budget or it's out of the budget to know where to categorize it. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yep.
So. I'm going to open up the topic first. I imagine we may have supplemental motions after we do that.
So I'm sorry, Tara, are you making a motion about, are you making a motion?
I need to open up the motion, so I need to open up the cut, and then we need to decide what we're doing with it.
Okay.
To everyone.
So just, just FYI, just, the way I structured this, and I can obviously change it as we go. But the way I structured this particular motion was, it's a motion to approve the pre-buy of iPads to receive an educational credit, thereby reducing RC15 account 12301 technology equipment by $195,000.
So that's a fine motion. I imagine there may be conversation within that, but we may have a benefit. Does that make sense to everybody?
Just, just a point of order, so if you were to say no to any one of these, it would still be in the 2020 budget, it just wouldn't be a pre-buy, correct?
No, well, we make that decision.
No, I want to make sure we're in the same line with Deb, what she just said, so.
So the way, the way my motion is structured is, it is not an outright cut. It is only a cut if it is approved to be pre-bought. Otherwise, it stays in the budget unless someone makes a motion to eliminate it.
Does that make sense? That's why I mean, there may be discussion within this overall motion. Everyone good?
So if you say no to the pre-buy, just to the pre-buy, it remains in the budget, correct, Deb?
That's the way I have the motion structured.
Thank you.
Okay, so I don't have Deb's language, it's great when she's right next to me. So.
Do you want me to read it again, or?
Deb's gonna make the motion. Go, Deb.
I'm gonna read the mo, the motion I have is, motion to approve the pre-buy of iPads to receive an educational credit, thereby reducing by 195,000 RC15 account 12301 technology equipment.
Okay, Mrs. Stein, so moves. I will second that motion. Okay, conversation. Mrs. Stein?
I'll reiterate what I said at our last meeting. I'm fully supportive of pre-buying. We've done it before, as we've heard from many constituents and panel speakers tonight. It makes sense. The dollars have already been taxed for education, and it saves us from cutting programs and staff.
Okay, any other comments? Mrs. Ritchie?
I support the pre-buy, especially of this particular item, because we will be getting cost savings if we do the pre-buy now, which we will not be able to realize if we delay this. And also, I don't like to say we have a surplus. I want to say we have educational lost experience of our students, and as a result, there is money left over. But at the end of the day, our students have not received the education they deserve. And I think ensuring that they have these devices and resources while purchasing at a discount makes complete sense. And we can still return a substantial amount of money to the town of Darien.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Burke?
Rather than a comment or a question at this point, I'd like to hear from anyone who's not in favor of this pre-buy and why, and then reserve any time left for rebuttal on that.
I think last meeting, we had some people opposed to pre-buy. Mr. Seeny?
So philosophically, I'm not opposed to pre-buy across the board, so, you know, maybe I didn't verbalize that. I, the way I'm looking at pre-buy this year is, we are coming so far ahead of budget, because, as Ms. Ritchie just pointed out, because our students weren't afforded the experience because of COVID. And you can see the savings of multiple hundreds of thousands directly related to that. So when I think of the surplus we're, we're running, and how large it is relative to previous years, a lot of that is due to COVID. You know, we typically, as I think was disclosed, return about $400,000 to $500,000 a year to the town budget. So the way I'm thinking of it is, we have a definable event. We actually have a definable impact, which Dr. Adley's laid out, to the summer school revenues that we're, we're not making. So, you know, there's a short, revenue shortfall. It's pretty definable at this point, given our outlook on summer school. So in my mind, it's gonna be on two fronts. I want to make up for that shortfall, that COVID-related shortfall, with these COVID-related extra dollars, if you, if you will. So I do, I will be supporting at least one of the pre-bys, if not two. However, you know, given the unknowns that we talked about earlier in the meeting, you know, there, there is a good, or very good chance we will be going and seeking additional funds from the general fund. So I feel like, you know, given that we weren't allowed a lapsing account, if the funds go back to the general fund, we will have to ask for appropriations for, for dollars. And so it's a way of me justifying, you know, spending dollars that were not allocated, were not appropriated for this year, for these items anyway, to make up for the COVID, as well as return dollars that we'll probably be asking for, for the next fiscal year. So that, that's my overall view, and I'll, you know, I'll disclose which items will be voting yes and no, as they come along, just like we did at every other item.
Okay, I think everyone's probably got a way in on this one. Mr. Maroni, do you have a feeling one way or the other?
Yeah, so I think I tend to side with Mr. Seeny on this, is I think the Board of Finance has requested budget cuts and efficiencies. And to come in and just pre-buy everything and say, we're, we're doing that. I, I, and to the speakers coming earlier in public comment, I am very nervous of, of taking the, the pre-buy and then coming back to the Board of Finance later in this year, or early next year, and requesting monies, and then coming to us and saying, well, you pre-bought $400,000. You're asking for 2 million, you get 1.6. And for me, that's going to be a difficult pill to swallow, where we find this extra 400,000. So I think we need to be very conservative in our pre-buy. I think Mr. Seeny makes a great point, that if we can pre-buy the COVID loss of revenue for summer school, that makes a lot of sense. I think the pre-buy of the iPads to reclaim roughly $10,000 to pre-purchase early makes a lot of sense. But I'm not sure every one of those makes sense to me.
Mr. Burke, and then I see Mrs. Stein. Mr. Burke?
Well, just because I wanted, I think we're taking these one at a time. So rather than saying, okay, how do you, you know, I'm okay with this one, but maybe not with another one. I'm interested to know about this particular pre-buy and where people feel. And I understand what Mr. Maroni is saying, but, you know, I don't fear the Board of Finance. I trust them. And I don't think, I think it would be grossly out of their character to put a penalty on the Board of Education if we were to go to seek future, future funds related to COVID, because they felt we didn't give enough back now. We've made amazing cuts, and we continue to do so. And, you know, and frankly, you know, when I came into this board six years ago, I ran to be on a Board of Education, not a Board of Deferral. These are funds that are educationally, they're already taxed, they're within the amount of money that we typically give back. It's not some sort of boon related to COVID that we're spending. And, well, I guess you know how I feel the rest, about the rest of the pre-bys, and we can wait and go through it. But I, I just don't, I, I, I don't understand that the reasoning expressed by Mr. Maroni. But I'm certainly ready, willing, and happy to be reeducated.
Mrs. Stein?
A couple of points, Dennis. I have to disagree with you. We're not saying we're pre-buying everything. We picked discrete items, some of which many of us board members have voted to allow pre-bys on through transfers in our budget cycles. So I'm confused as to why now it's a red flag. I agree with Mr. Burke. I don't fear the, you know, the Board of Finance. We have the support of the RTM. I think, you know, we're being responsible. We're not spending all of it. We are still returning a significant amount. And then my question to Mr. Seeny is, procedurally, how do you pre-buy lost revenue? I don't understand how one would do that. I, you know, honestly, I, you know, maybe, Rich, you could explain how we would use that.
Let me, let me clarify, make, you know, we're gonna have lost revenue somewhere in the $150,000 range. So my, my decisions are gonna reflect that amount, you know, going forward, as we go line item by line item.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like.
And just to be clear, I, those were not my comments about fearing the Board of Finance. I'm just being fiscally responsible within the budget year, in terms of my decisions.
Mr. Seeny, you stepped away during those comments. Mrs. McCannan and Mr. Dineen, Mr. Brown, I'd like to hear everyone on this issue, because it's become so. So, Mr. Dineen, do you have thoughts on this issue? Duke, you're muted.
All right.
Do you have any thoughts?
No, good, good conversation and good comments by all. I think the one thing that goes through my thought process with respect to the equipment and the technology is that it's proved that the investment that we've put in technology over the last couple of years has proved and served us well through this e-learning process, through this e-learning pandemic school year. We don't know what the fall is gonna bring. I do think we have to be fiscally prudent about how we spend the dollars, but continuing to invest in technology for our students makes sense. I think we have to continually, there's a lot we don't know. And I think that bucket of the dollars that are gonna be needed for reopening and social distancing and bus has, just has to be kept as a separate bucket that will be a request to the Board of Finance.
Mrs. McCannan?
Thank you. I, I, sorry. I echo a couple of different things I've heard tonight. I, I would agree. I am not concerned about the relationship with the Board of Finance. I think that we have a good relationship, and we're going to continue to work on it. I think as a board, we can make that commitment. I think, however, as an individual, I feel concerned about our fiduciary responsibility in being able to provide the optimal educational environment for our children in the fall. I want to make sure that every student we can accommodate can get into the school building and get the optimal education that we can provide them, and I feel very strongly about that. So while I am willing to discuss aspects of, of pre-buy, if they make sense, I really feel like I want to make sure that we have plenty of dollars to rely upon, that don't send us below any sort of policy threshold for the Board of Finance, so that we can educate our kids. I think that's the priority, and I think, I feel concerned about not saving appropriately for that. Specifically to the actual pre-buy, the, the other thing I think, and I said this in the, in the last meeting, is that I do think that there are some items lower down on the page that would help guide this decision for us that, that may make sense. So I hate, I, I wish it was in a different order. But I respect that this is the way it is. And I'll leave it at that.
McCannan, can I just clarify one thing? The interconnection, I just want to make sure I understand, you see between the pre-buy and opening schools for kids in the fall?
We heard from Dr. Adley this summer that this summer could cost up to $900,000. We heard that we'd like to get as many kids into the school building as possible. We heard that we're having to look at all different aspects of how to run schools. And I want to make sure that we have maximum financial flexibility to make, to run schools in the fall for as many kids as possible.
Okay, Mr. Brown, thoughts?
My thought on this is, I agree, this probably should be the last item we take up. I think we should see if this is even anything we need to get to, or if there's other ways to get to the target we've been given by the Board of Finance. And echoing what Mr. Burke said, you know, I, I don't have any fear, but I think the trust issue is important. I think at this stage, this is not on its own an issue of a pre-buy. This is an issue that has come along after we had lengthy discussions about a non-lapsing account, and we're told no. And I think to do it in light of that circumstance doesn't show, you know, doesn't show good faith on our part, after we've been told not to proceed down that road. So that's my thought at this time.
Mrs. Stein, I see your hand raised. I think everyone else at least got a say.
Yeah, like a broken record, because this is what Dennis said last time. This is something that is legal, something that this board has done multiple times in the years I've been on this board. I do not understand the resistance. I also don't see how pre-buying has anything to do with opening schools next year. The money has to be returned by the end of the month regardless. If we pre-buy technology, we're getting a discount during a time when, you know, dollars are precious. I am, like, I'm sorry to show my frustration, but I'm beyond frustrated. We've done it before. Why the change now?
Mrs. Ritchie?
Just, just to keep everybody in check, if we do the pre-buy for iPads, we still would return to the town $728,097. Just, that's a lot of money. It's a good amount of money.
Okay, Mr. Burke?
I, I'm confused by the issue of trust and having to earn the trust of the Board of Finance. We're the Board of Education. We swore an oath. We swore an oath to serve the children of this town. The Board of Finance, well within their powers and discretion, has given us a target cut, and there are ways to meet that. And I think to do anything other than the pre-bys, which, by the way, are being recommended by the people that we've hired to run this district. So I feel like, and I could be completely wrong, but I feel like I'm hearing people say that they don't want to do the pre-bys because they're concerned about the Board of Finance. Well, I think we ought to be concerned about the Board of Education. I think we ought to be concerned about our children, and I think we ought to vote appropriately.
I saw one hand. Was it Mrs. Ritchie? Was it your hand? And then, Mr. Brown, I just saw your hand. Mrs. Ritchie?
I, I was just gonna say exactly what Mike said, which is, I would love for us to start thinking about children and education, and worrying about that, and making that our top priority, because that is our number one priority as we sit here at this table. And I think pre-buying a few things right now ensures that we return money to the town, and we have that conversation with the Board of Finance. And it is fiscally responsible, but most of all, it's responsible to our children.
Mr. Brown?
Just very quickly, two things I heard. I don't think I stated that this was illegal in any way. So if anyone has that impression, let me clarify, that is not a statement I am making. And secondly, I just wanted to speak in terms of trust. I didn't say it's our obligation about enter and trust. Thank you.
So I'll throw my hat in the game, although I'm sure you're all not surprised where I am. I, I, I think the idea that we have to worry about a vengeful Board of Finance is not a great idea. I would hope and expect, in their sworn elected duty, that that is not what, what they would do. I also believe that maybe besides our newest member on the board, and maybe Mr. Brown, every member here has supported pre-buying iPads in the past in much better financial situations, so I'm not sure why we wouldn't now. And I would agree with Mrs. McCannan that we, we need flexibility. I don't think returning funds to the general account is the only method of flexibility. It is one. It is one we may have to encounter, but it certainly isn't the only way. And, and we know our kids need this. We know that we will save the taxpayers of Darien money on this because of the savings. And we know we have tax dollars that we've taxed them for education. So to me, pre-buying, and quite frankly, pre-buying as much as we can, only serves the public. And that's what we are here to do. We are here to serve the children and serve education. And I think we support our administration on this recommendation. So, that said, unless there's, oh, Mr. Seeny, I'm sorry.
Just one clarification from Rich. Can we pre-order and still get the savings and then, you know, purchase them in the following, you know, the next fiscal year?
We do have to give them a purchase order this year. And they have been to
Uh, and they have indicated it has to be by June 15th, which is Monday. So we would have to pay for it this year.
You, you would have to pay for them before July 1st?
Uh, well, it's usually a net 30 days. So it would be paid probably in July, but we would have to expense it in this fiscal year because the purchase order obligates us to earmark those funds this year.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so there is a motion on the table. Are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of reducing the budget. Deb, make sure I get, Deb, why don't you read it? So I don't mess it up. You're on mute, Deb? Deb, you're on mute.
Sorry. The motion is the motion to approve the pre-buy of iPads to receive an educational credit thereby reducing by 195,000 RC 15 account 12301 technology equipment.
Okay. All, I'm going to do this one in the affirmative because it has been such a discussion. All those in favor of this. That's Mr. Burke, Mr. Dineen, Mr. Maroney, Mrs. Stein, Mrs. McCammon, Mrs. Ritchie. All those opposed.
What about you, Tara?
Oh, sorry, Mrs. Akman. All those opposed. Mr. Brown and Mr. Seni. That doesn't leave any abstentions, so the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We will move on to, um, account 22001 textbooks, a reduction of 100.
Tara, can I, I did sort of a similar thing with this as well.
Yeah.
So I said, a motion to approve the pre-buy of math textbooks thereby reducing by 170,000 RC 19 account 22001 textbooks. And please, Rich, correct me if I have something wrong.
I think it makes sense.
Yep.
Or Rich, you're good. Okay, uh, may I have a motion? I need someone to open it. Mrs. Stein, one second. Mr. Seni, discussion. Mrs. Ritchie.
Um, I, I do agree with this particular pre-buy. This is something I supported during the budget process. I think these are resources that are essential to our children. And I would not approve of any cut to this item. I would like to see this fully funded. And I think it makes sense, as I said before, to pre-buy this particular item. And that would leave us with $558,097 to return to the general fund.
Okay, Mr. Dineen. Mr. Dineen, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Just to clarify, Rich, this was the change in the contract. It was a longer contract, right?
Correct. So the original budget was for a six-year subscription to the math books. Originally, uh, we suggested changing it to a three-year subscription for a $39,000 reduction. The longer the subscription, the longer the savings are. So on a six-year, you're saving $46,000 compared to a three-year.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Maroney.
If someone could help me in our, in our math programs, how long do we traditionally hold the math program? When do we, when do we cycle through our math programs?
I would need a bit of history on that. I mean, I, I would need to be a bit of history on that as to when they were last reviewed.
I think, Deb, it's, are you getting at whether these textbooks will be, have a useful life of six years of subscription?
Uh, it, yeah, I guess. And will we be looking at changing our math program in that timeframe?
So Dennis, Dennis, we, Dennis. So, sorry to interrupt. We talked about this during the budget process. I specifically asked this because it was an item that I was looking to cut. And from what I can recall, Suzy said it definitely had a long enough duration that it made sense to do a six-year rather than a three-year subscription and based on the cost savings. So that's my recollection. Maybe someone else has a better recollection.
Comments? I, I think this is another one that over time saves Darien $46,000. We could cut the budget $39,000 and pay $46,000. I mean, I, the math to me, that doesn't make sense in the, in the big picture, as I think some people were talking about. Um, other thoughts?
I, I agree. I think it's short-sighted to not do the six-year.
Is everyone ready to vote? Mr. Burke?
Well, I, I agree with those comments. I mean, how do you cut books?
Okay, uh, this is a pre-buy, so I'll go around. Mrs. McCammon. No comments? Okay, Mr. Brown? No comment. Okay, so we're ready to vote. Um, the motion on the table is to pre-buy the six-year subscription of math textbooks so as to reduce the 2021 budget $170,000. All those in favor? Mr. Dineen, Mrs. Stein, Mr. Burke, Mrs. Ritchie. All those opposed. Deb, your hands down and, and myself.
Yeah, I was just looking for your vote. Okay.
Yeah, and then all those opposed, Mr. Maroney, Mr. Seni, and Mr. Brown. The motion carries.
Wait, I didn't get, what was?
Uh, Mrs. McCammon, sorry.
Sorry, Jill was a no?
Jill is a no.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Jill, you pixelated. I didn't know, we couldn't hear you.
Jill, you disappeared into those bushes behind you.
Yeah.
I did, sorry.
Um, we will move on to account 0102001, taken similarly to pre-buy uniforms for fiscal year 20.
Tara, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I was hoping we could just get from Rich where we are in terms of how close are we getting to where we need to be before we get to the next motion?
And Rich, can you add the $10,000 we talked about in the salary savings?
Sure. Um, so currently the reduction is 763,746 without the 9,787 that we talked about earlier. So adding that in, we're at 773,533. Uh, so we are, have left 251,623.
Sorry, is that 251?
251,623.
Can I just ask a question?
Thank you.
That's what I, I don't know if the board is, I don't want to mix it up. That can clarify and that's without, uh, that's without the makeup of summer school of about 150. Is that correct, Richard?
That's correct. It doesn't include the deficit for summer school.
Okay. All right, so we will move on to the motion in account 102001, the pre-purchasing of uniforms in fiscal year 20, thus creating an $89,840 reduction in the 2021 budget. May I have motion? Mrs. Stein, may I have a second? Mr. Burke, conversation. Mrs. Ritchie.
So this is one item of pre-buy that I actually don't support. I don't think it's a good use for the pre-buy program. I don't know if we want to consider it further down the road because we don't know what sports are going to look like next year. Maybe you want, you want to think, contemplate some sort of minor reduction to this line item. But I actually don't support pre-buying for uniforms. I don't think that's a good use of the funds.
Okay, any other thoughts? Seeing nobody, Mr. Dineen. Mr. Dineen, you are on mute.
It's, it comes up saying different things when I unmute it. Sorry. Rich, you had made a proposal a while ago of cutting that in half based on the spring uniforms that were not used?
So in speaking with the athletic director, because there was no spring season, there was no use of the uniforms. So the spring uniform amount of that 89,000 is 49,340. So you could reduce that amount off the 89,840 based on the athletic director recommendation.
Is that something the administration agrees with?
I would, I can support that.
Okay, if someone is interested in that, they would need to make that motion. Mrs. Ritchie.
I will, I will make that motion with Rich's help. So I make the motion to reduce by $49,350 RC 11 account 102001 interscholastic equipment rentals and supplies based on the savings due to no spring sports be. So.
Second that motion. So the motion is open for discussion. Uh, Mr. Brown.
Thanks. So, um, if I'm looking at that right, then that pre-buy becomes $40,000?
Rich, you want to confirm those numbers for us?
Uh, so if you were to pre-buy, it'd be 40,500. Uh, and then the reduction to the budget would be 49,340 for the spring uniforms.
Thoughts? Nobody. My thoughts on this are that we're just kind of backing ourselves up. Again, I would argue that for $40,000, we can both meet kind of our students' needs. And we don't end up up in a budget situation where we back ended and one year, all of a sudden, we have, um, you know, $150,000 buy for uniforms. I would be in favor of this pre-purchase. Anyone else? Mr. Burke?
I would as well. I remember our conversations at the original budget meeting and why this went back in. And like, this was already a.
So I'm sorry, I just, I'm sorry, like, just to make a point of order right now, I think the motion we're talking about is the reduction of 49,350. So I think we need to clear off that, that particular motion and then we can move on to the, the other one.
That makes perfect sense to make that.
Thank you. Otherwise, I get confused.
Yeah, so there's a motion on the table to to reduce the budget by $49,350 for the budget. So let's vote on that. May I have, is there a first? Someone move that?
Yes, I moved it and you seconded, I believe.
Oh, yeah, sorry. So, um, there was discussion, all in favor? That looks, uh, okay, that's Mr. Burke, Mr. Maroney, Mr. Seni, Mrs. Stein, Mrs. McCammon, Mr. Brown, and Mr. Dineen. So that is unanimous.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and then, so that then creates.
Well, then we have to go back and vote on the other motion, which probably won't carry.
Well, no, now we, now we, we would amend that motion because that money no longer exists. So you'd have an amended motion to pre-buy uniforms for fiscal, in fiscal year 20 from account 102001 and reducing fiscal year 2021 $40,500. May, may I have a motion?
Wait, wait, Tara, I'm sorry. Just, can you read, read that motion again? So we're, we're amending the original motion to reduce the pre-buy dollar amount to $40,500?
So may I have a motion?
Is it 4490? And then 268690?
Steve, are you talking?
I, I got a different number. I got 40,490.
Okay, I get 40,490 to be accurate.
The reduction of the spring was 49,340. And then the fall uniforms would be 40,500. So total, it's 89,340.
If the pre-buy. So may I have a motion? Mr. Burke, in a second, and we can open it up, conversation. Mrs. Stein, any conversation on the pre-purchase? Is everyone ready to vote? Mr. Maroney, conversation.
Sorry, so I keep going back to that this, this item was not in the superintendent's original budget. I realize we put it in. I think that was in a different fiscal time. And, and what I really struggle with, and to Mrs. McCammon's point, I find this very early in the process where we're, we may be talking about eliminating freshman sports, and yet we're going to fund uniforms. So I really struggle with that personally, so.
These are varsity uniforms?
I understand. I still struggle with the fact that we're going to cut a freshman sport and make sure the varsity players have very nice uniforms. We potentially cut freshman sports.
I'm not sure the math works that way, but it could. I hear you. Mr. Burke?
No, I was just pointing out that, and I didn't think we had cut any sports yet, so.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Are we ready to vote?
Could we just clarify the motion, please?
The motion is to pre-buy uniforms in fiscal year 20 in the amount of $40,500, sorry. Yes, in the amount of $40,500, thus reducing the budget. Deb, keep me honest, $49,349?
We just, we just reduced, didn't we just reduce the budget?
We reduced, John, we're reducing the pre-buy to $40,500.
Because $40,500 is all that's left now of this particular item. So, yeah.
Okay.
So now we're looking to see if people will approve the pre-buy of what remains.
So all in favor of that pre-buy? Okay, that's Mr. Burke, Mr. Seni, Mrs. Stein, Mr. Dineen. All opposed. Mr. Maroney, Mrs. Ritchie, Mrs. McCammon, and Mr. Brown. So that motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for hanging in there with us because it gets complicated.
So, so Rich, could we, if you have it, just where are we at this point in time?
Uh, so the total cut is 863,373. Uh, and what is left before the summer school deficit is 161,783.
782?
83.
83, okay.
Okay, so we will move on to account number 123021, the pre-buy of elementary routers, thus reducing the fiscal year 2021 budget by $20,000. May I have a motion? Mr. Burke, may I have a second? Mr. Dineen, conversation. Everyone ready to vote?
With this, we, there's no rebate or anything. We're just purchasing, um, five routers at four grand apiece.
Correct.
Okay, any conversation? Okay, we ready to vote? All those in favor? Mr. Burke, Mr. Dineen, Mrs. Stein, Mr. Ritchie, Mr. Seni. Is that a hand, I can't see your half out of the screen. Okay. So that, wait, raise your hand again for affirmative. That is Burke, Dineen, Stein, Ritchie, and Akman. All those opposed. Seni, Maroney, McCammon, and Brown. Thank you, everyone. That motion carries. Okay, we will move on to, do you want? Uh, account 21605, a reduction of transportation driver, a reduction of $11,833 that could change the transportation driver to $238. May I have a motion? Mr. Maroney, may I have a second?
Sorry.
Mr. Dineen? Any conversation? Okay, seeing that there's no conversations, is there anyone opposed to this? Is there anyone abstaining from this? This motion carries. Um, the next is various accounts out of RC 16, 18, and 20. And it is supporting Schedule C, which was provided to the board. Is central services adjustments. It is a reduction of $68,777. May I have a motion? I need a motion to open the conversation. Mr. Burke, so move, Mr. Dineen, second. Any conversation? Seeing none. Is there any opposition to this motion? Are there any abstentions? This motion carries. Okay, account number 110118, teacher, this is reduction of 56,313. This is additional teacher savings from 4.5 to 5, his contractual savings. Dr. Adley, correct me if I'm wrong, he's not a body?
Well, technically, it would be a body, yes.
But correct me if I'm wrong, this, we're reaching this because of the contract, the new contract?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But it is a body.
Okay, so let's
It's an FTE.
I will ask, will it affect the teaching and learning the children receive?
No, because some other English teachers are going to pick it up.
I'm sorry, Tara, just point of order, did we move this motion?
No, I'm sorry. May I have a motion to open the conversation? Mr. Burke and Mr. Maroney, thank you, conversation is open, thank you, Deb. But this was a natural attrition that would have happened out of the agreed-upon teacher contract?
Yes.
Okay, I just don't want the public to think that we're cutting their favorite English teacher.
No.
Okay, is there any conversation on this? Is there any objection? Is there any abstentions? This motion carries. Rich, you want to check in with us and tell us where we are?
Yep, sure. So the cut so far is 1,018,826, and we are $6,330 away, excluding the summer school deficit that's projected at 152,165.
Okay. Account number 82002, health insurance.
Point of information?
Mr. Brown?
Are we going to stop when we hit the number, or are we going to go all the way through this exercise tonight?
We can go through all the way through the exercise.
Thank you.
Wait, why would we keep cutting if we've reached our number?
Well, I think that's for discussion. I think the board has to have that, but we can't preclude going further. I'm not sure why we would want to cut the budget more, but I can't stop Mr. Brown from raising the question. 82002, the health insurance associated with the savings from teacher teaching 4.5 to 5 classes, it's a reduction of the budget of 9,835. May I have a motion? Mrs. Stein and Mr. Maroney, conversation? Any objections? Any abstentions? That motion carries.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, I think people know that 25, these all go together, you can't really pick one without the other.
Yeah, but I have to poll them each, one by one.
We could, for the, I'm sorry, Tara, for the music teacher, we could consolidate two of the motions, is that right, Rich? Because they refer to the same account number. This is for the
You want to take 201 and 201 and combine?
Right, we can move 21301 first, and then the other, the next two could be combined. Am I right on that, Rich?
That's correct.
Okay, so let's take 301, and then we'll take 201, and Rich, you can give me an additive number, because I don't have it in my calculator with me. Music teachers, it's account 21301, music teachers, it's reduction in the budget of 33,908. That is making the music director, all of this is making the music director's position 1FTE. This is not some of the reductions to music that we're talking about later on in the budget.
Well, actually, you're making the music teacher, the music teacher 1.0, and you're reducing the music director by 0.3.
Yes.
And then, yes, does that make sense?
Okay, everyone know where we are on that? Okay, so can I have a motion to open up the suggested reduction on account 21301? Mr. Burke, seconded by Mr. Maroney, any discussion? Any objection? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Now we can
So Tara, by my calculation, and Rich can correct me if I'm wrong, this would be a net of 24,000, net increase of 24,606, is that correct, Rich?
That's correct.
Okay, and now we'll take the next two lines, which are 21201. Rich, you want to give me the total on that?
It's
I just did twenty-four, six.
Yep.
Okay, that is the change with Dr. Adley, just described, director of music, 1FTE twelve months to 1FTE ten months. Is there any, can we have a motion? Mr. Burke, and a second? Mr. Seeny, any conversation? Any objections? Mrs. Ritchie?
Just real quick, I just want to make sure that this is what we always intended to do, or is this something we now are doing because of the need to reduce our operating budget?
We originally went out for a one-year, full-year position, and then when we get in this process, we moved out of it again. And actually, it actually worked, it works well, it also works well with the union and different things, so it is fine. We're working with it.
So just confirming that this won't have an impact on the music program?
No, absolutely, absolutely not, no. It's still overall a better organizational change when you take all three into consideration.
So with that, do I have any objections to this motion? Do I have any abstentions? With that, the motion carries. Now, Rich, I believe at this point, we have achieved the reduction, and we are looking at the lost revenue, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, and so where are we on revenue? We've achieved
Can you give us, I'm sorry, just can you give us the exact dollar amounts? In other words, where are we in total cut? And basically, if we've gone over, how much?
So the cumulative cut is 1,37,963. We're 12,807 over the budget reduction, taking into account the summer school forecast deficit, 152,165, a net shortfall of 139,358.
Can you just repeat that? I didn't quite catch that. What's the net shortfall with summer school?
139,358.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to turnover. There is a suggestion on the, I'm sorry, account 1102, for a reduction of that budget of 12,241. It assumes one pay period delay in replacing non-certified staff who will retire June 30th. May I have a motion? Mr. Burke, may I have a second? Mr. Seeny, conversation? No conversation. Seeing none. I will, are there any objections? Are there any abstentions? That motion carries. We will move on to account 031000, budget control. There is a motion on the table to reduce budget control, 132,338, which is a reduction of half of budget control. May I have a motion? Mr. Seeny, and a second? Mr. Dineen, conversation? Mr. Maroney? Mr. Maroney, you're on mute?
This reduction would put us over the savings, correct? If my math is correct?
Yes.
Correct.
So I'd like to amend it to the balance to get to the savings and the lost revenue.
John, what would
Sorry, it's 11 o'clock. I'd like to amend it to get the net number from Rich. You know, so it would be a reduction, or a smaller reduction than the 132 that's on the spreadsheet. Rich, do you have that?
It would be 127,117.
So I'd like to amend it to that number.
Second.
I will tell you, I have some concerns about this number, picking up on something Mrs. McCann said earlier, that she'd like the maximum amount of dollars to make sure a school can open. I am concerned, some of what we're hearing, that if we need teachers, that we're already looking, based on our enrollment report, about sections being very closed. I am concerned about cutting this one this close. Mrs. Ritchie?
I am also concerned about going beyond 1FTE. I would support cutting 1FTE from budget control, which I believe is, I lost my number, it's somewhere in the range of 66,000, but I have several friends in real estate, and what they're telling me is they haven't seen a market like this in a really long time. There isn't a rental to be found in this town, and I think in July, we're going to find that a lot more families have relocated from New York City, and I want to be able to have flexibility if we need to hire teachers, to be able to hire teachers when we need to hire teachers.
Thoughts? Yeah, I'll come back to that again. Mr. Burke?
I agree with our chair, and I agree with Ms. Ritchie. I think it's risky to limit our abilities in budget control. I think it's a very volatile market, and we may really need to be going back out into the market for more teachers at a time when everybody else is going to be doing the same thing. So I would like to keep that reduction much lower than proposed.
Mr. Maroney?
I would like to ask Dr. Adley, who, this is not common occurrence in most other districts in the state, of what do they do?
It would not be uncommon for people to go back for another appropriation. When I look at this, because this changed from the last time we were sitting at the table, I'm looking at this as relatively, and certainly board members can disagree with me, as can the Board of Finance, but once we go beyond this, we're into programs and people with kids and impacting programs. So this is, as I say, this is my last opportunity to try and be creative of meeting the deficit, whatever it is we have to make up, before we touch anything. So I would be encouraging us to do that, and I would take the Board of Finance at their word, that if there's COVID-related things, and we would have to go back to them. So then, I guess.
Mr. Maroney?
Yeah, so for me, I think I'm on the same exact page as this, is that I don't see why we would keep a potential teacher when we only have plus one in elementary school, and our projections for the last four years have been spot on. We're minus three in kindergarten, and again, no one has a crystal ball as to what happens, but, you know, I was just reprimanded about going to the Board of Finance, and this would be a, we could easily say this is a COVID-related expense if people begin to move out to the city, from the city, to here, that I think this would be an easily funded problem to have, and to me, I don't think we should be talking anything further down, which directly impacts teachers and students for a possibility.
So Dr. Adley, are you telling me you would prefer to lose the flexibility of budget control rather than cut into something like student interns?
Well, student interns, it sounds like student interns isn't a big deal, but they, the principals come up on that screen, they would tell you how big a deal they are and the quality of the daily substitutes that they do, and the coverage that they do, and what they contribute to the schools, the schools, from that, yes?
I'm not doubting it, I just want to make sure that we know where we're going, in terms of if we need a paraprofessional or a teacher at the end of the year, that's the judgment call we're making.
Well, listen, it's definitely, it's definitely a different approach to perhaps what has been done in the past, but this is different times, and certainly, I would need it, obviously, the board has to prove it, so I would put it out there. I just don't want to touch anymore if I can help it.
Okay, other board member thoughts?
I support Mr. Seeny's cut then. If Dr. Adley says this is, you know, reasonable, I'm good with it.
So Mr. Seeny, do you, we need to put your motion, or is there any other conversation? Mrs. McCann?
I know it's a subsequent line item, but because it's, we're talking about later on the pike, can you talk a little bit, Alan, please, a little bit more about the value of student interns? My understanding was we don't hire particularly from that cohort, and while I appreciate the value of a steady, supportive source of interns, I'm just wondering if another set of substitutes would be behoove the district?
Well, actually, I hate my words, because the last time we came here, we did hire one, so that's a positive. I can just tell you that when we went through the budget process the last time to get down to 3.4, your principals valued these people so much that they made other concessions, so that gives you an idea of how they value them in the classroom and what they do. If staff members are right, you certainly want a quality experience in the classroom.
Thank you. I would agree with most, some of what I've heard about impacting dollars, on potential dollars before actual people.
And Mrs. Ritchie?
So just a point, an overall point on budget control, it has been a useful tool in the past, because in Darien, we do sometimes have these spikes that come in August that are unexpected, and we have used it in the past, not so much in the recent past, but if we do make this cut, I would propose that we consider reinstating it to the full dollar amount in the next budget, because it is an important tool, and it's really our only contingency. We do not have any other contingencies in our budget.
Mr. Seeny?
We're not talking about next year's budget, right? We're just talking about the balance that's left, that Rich outlined, that I amended the line, and so could we call the question on this?
You don't have a second yet. You need a second on that motion. Mr. Maroney?
I had Dennis down as a second on the motion.
I'm sorry. Well, I think it's important enough that I want to give everyone time to talk about it, if there's any other questions on this. Okay, seeing none. All in favor of the amended cut, and give me the exact number, Mr. Roodel, 127?
127, 117.
117. All in favor? Mr. Dineen, Mr. Maroney, Mr. Seeny, Mrs. Stein, Mr. McCann, Mr. Ritchie, Mr. Brown, and are you up? Mr. Burke, I can't tell. Myself? Okay, you don't have to be, I'm just trying to read your vote. Are you in favor?
No, I'm not.
So that motion carries with one objection, Mr. Burke? All right.
So are we done?
We have reached our goals. Mr. Brown, you brought up the question of do we need to cut further? Is there anything you need to say, or anyone on the board needs to hear? Mr. Brown?
I was asking what our process was, that's why I asked as a point of information. I hadn't heard that answered, how we were going to proceed. So the question was, what is our process for this evening?
Okay, is there anyone who feels like we need to go further?
No.
No, we've reached our necessary cut, and I feel like we are finished, and let's move on.
Okay, all right.
This is, sorry, this is Jill, you're having trouble seeing me, because I'm pixelating. The only thing I would say that I would like us to talk about is that line number 79, elementary intramurals, I wasn't aware that it was only one school that we were funding, and if we don't have time to respond, I'm happy to talk about that, but I think it's inequitable between the five schools.
I don't think we can cherry pick. I think if you're going to do one, you're going to go all the way through. So I think we have to decide, do we want to look at further reductions? I hear your point, Mrs. McCann, and we can certainly raise that, but I think I think we can't kind of cherry pick items at this point, is my own opinion.
I'm just confused if we cut more than, where did the actual dollars go then? I mean, we're appropriated a certain dollar amount, so thought we had to meet that appropriation as a matter of process.
Yeah.
Yes, I feel we've reached our appropriation, and now, if there's something that someone wants to further discuss another time, we can happily do that, but I don't think at this point it's appropriate to move on.
Could it offset the pre-buy?
1120, I'm pretty ready to go.
No, I'm sorry, Jill, we already, those votes were already, they've gone through. No, I'm sorry, Jill, we already, those votes were already, they've gone through, they've been approved, the board voted, the board has spoken, so now cannot.
Okay, any other thoughts for tonight? Great, all right, we will move on to a first reading. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work. I know it's been.
Thank you, thank you.
In some ways, a contentious couple of weeks, so I'm glad we've come to something, and we have saved as much of our budget as we could.
I think it's important to reiterate, we didn't cut into any of those programs that everybody's worried about also.
I would, if I may, just want to comment on the board's work tonight. I think it's good work, it protected the things, certainly, that I've asked to protect, and that I think the board wants to protect, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I think, I think the, in the end, the support for pre-buying allowed us to stay away from programs and staffing.
And I just, can I quickly, Tara, just say thank you to those who did, in the end, support pre-buying? Thank you.
Yes, thank you for those who came around, and I know it probably wasn't an easy decision. We'll move on to a first reading and discussion of the 2021-22 school calendar. Dr. Adley?
Well, usually, a school calendar with Board of Education gets a lot of attention, but it may not tonight at this hour, so my colleagues, you have the history on the school calendar, sort of like what, the big thing really is the February break, so to speak. You know, it could be a week earlier or not. There's some schools have it a week earlier, and some schools do not have it a week earlier, so that's kind of, that's kind of the big thing for the most part. Certainly, the board can look at this over. I'm happy to answer questions if I have any, but.
Any questions? It's a first reading, any discussion? Mrs. Stein?
I just had a question, looking at the January, the PD day of the 21st, was any, because that really sort of breaks up that week? Was any thought given to making the 14th PD day and having a long weekend?
That might make more sense, in some case, in some ways. I don't know if Christopher has a comment on that about PD, but certainly, well, they can take that into consideration.
I agree, that's a change worth looking into, for sure.
So if you could get back to us on that? Okay, any other questions? Mr. Maroni?
A question, just a comment, that I fully support moving the February break to the later date, I think having the eight-week break between the two breaks is a very long time, or it's seven weeks, I can't do my math, I'm exhausted, but, but I think moving it back a week shortens that time period, because it's a long winter there without, without a break.
Can I just provide some clarification? Because we're talking about February, but Dr. Adley, the difference in the other school calendars was the April break, so I just didn't want to.
I apologize, sorry, April break.
Yeah. Okay, everyone good? All right, we'll move on to action items. Mrs. Stein, PAR for this evening?
PAR, a couple of new hires and some of those retirements for non-certified, who will save us a little money over the summer.
Great, can I have a motion to approve the PAR dated today, June 9, 2020? Mr. Brown and Mr. Maroni, all in favor? That is unanimous. I keep getting dates wrong, so thank you all for bearing with me. And the contract between the Darien Board of Education, the Darien Cafeteria Workers Union, United Public Service Employees Union, Mrs. Stein?
We got a, I mean, I'm not sure how much detail you want us to go into, but we got a great settlement with the cafeteria workers, and most importantly, the ability to contract out, do subcontracting work, which is very rare to get in Fairfield County, in a district like Darien, and we hope that that will increase the profit in that area in the future.
Okay, the board, may I have a motion to approve the contract agreement between the Darien Board of Ed and the Darien Cafeteria Workers United Public Service Employees Union? Mrs. Stein, in a second. Mr. Brown, all in favor? And that is unanimous vote, thank you, everybody. Public comment, do we have anyone still waiting with us at 11:30? Dr. McGeadigan, are you still with us?
I am still here, and there are, there is one hand up.
Great.
Sarah Parent, you are unmuted.
Thank you, I just wanted to say I'm in my glasses and in my pajamas, but I just wanted to say thank you for working together in a respectful manner and working hard to protect our children and programming and staff, so we are very appreciative of that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent, anybody else? I see two participants hand raised.
Yep, we have Carolina.
We have Carolina. Carolina?
Hi, thank you, Tara. I just wanted to say the same thing, thank you so much, this has been a great night for everybody, especially the students, so I want to thank everybody for their great work, hard work, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McGoy, thank you.
And Jocelyn?
Hi, it's Jocelyn Delancey, Board of DEA here. I just wanted to thank everyone for the incredible support for the teachers and the work that you guys have put into this dialogue. The teachers really appreciate it, and I know I do for myself, especially the parents who spoke up on behalf of education, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Delancey. Anyone else this evening, before it's tomorrow? Okay, seeing no hands raised, may I entertain a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Stein, so moves. And I just, my screen showed Mr. Dineen, seconds, all in favor? And that, my friends, is unanimous. Thank you all, and have a very good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone, nice work.